All right, it is two o'clock. We're gonna call the special town council meeting for February eleventh, twenty twenty five to order. Roll call, please. Helen.
Marika Page.
Here.
Dick Carlton.
Here.
Gerard.
Here.
Carol Sade.
Here.
Jay Beckerman.
Present.
Rod Rankin.
Here.
Mayor Kelly Owens.
Here. All right, we have some new business approval of settlement agreement with P A E S F L Parcel Six LLC. I'm not sure, are you something?
How about, I'll start and then Hey, Keely can pick up all the stuff I missed. So as you know, we've had, as Keely put in the memo, there's been a dispute over the appraisal value of parcel six of the B G B Development Agreement and as our code provides, there can be an objection to the assessed, or the, yeah, to the assessed value. And in this case, there were appraisals done by B G B and appraisals done by the town. So we've been working to come to an agreement on what the fee and lieu should be on the value of that property, which is a requirement before the subdivision plat can be filed. So in the packet, you have the memo from Keely, which describes the kind of overview of the situation. And then just to highlight the agreement, B G B has offered two million dollars for the fee and loop for parcel six. That is to be paid by January first of twenty twenty or upon sale of the eighth lot, whichever comes sooner. And as you recall, the sale of the eighth lot cannot happen until after the roundabout and employee housing are built on Park Avenue. Knowing that it's going to be a little bit here before that two million dollars gets paid, B G B has agreed to provide the town with one point two five percent of the sale of the first two lots, first two of seven lots on parcel six, and then two point five percent of the sale of the next five lots. So that will provide some of that two million dollars in advance of that one one twenty eight date, and then he'll pay the balance, they will pay the balance when it, when they sell the eighth lot, or when we get to the first of January twenty twenty eight. In the meantime, they'll also establish a letter of credit payable to the town in case they do not pay us as of the required date. And the last two things I want to point out, the first one is that the two million dollars that is required of the development agree, required in the development agreement for B G B to pay to FERC for the Soul Center will be paid in cash no later than Friday, February twenty, uh, February fourteenth. And then the last note is that this releases the town and B G B for many future claims, so they cannot come back and sue us or say that in some way the valuation or the payment was inappropriate.
On this issue.
Pardon?
On just this issue.
On just this issue, yes. Keely, what did I miss?
Um, you captured most of it. The only thing I would note is that they did, you know, there was a notice of default that was given to the town that raised sort of some additional potential claims. Those are also being released as part of this agreement. So I think they are, they were claims related to the application and calculation of the fee and lieu. So I think this, this settlement agreement resolves those claims as well.
Great. Okay, thank you very much. Are there questions for staff? Keely or?
Is there anyone on Zoom?
I don't know.
Are there any B G B representatives in the, you know, participating in this?
Does not appear so.
All right, well, great. Any comments? Any final comments? All right, so Keely, it's my understanding that we need to have a motion on this. Is that?
Yes, please. A motion and a vote, a roll call.
Can I please get a motion?
I move that we approve the agreement as proposed.
Is that fine? Do we need any of the specifics?
Nope.
Roll call, please, Helen.
Councilmember Rankin.
Yes.
Councilmember Carlton.
Yes.
Councilmember Beckerman.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Sade.
Yes.
Councilmember Gerard.
Yes.
Mayor Owens.
Yes. Okay, so that makes it so that FERC gets their money on Valentine's and, and that we can move forward through this part of the process, which is great news. Thank you, Shannon and Keely and Scott, anybody else who worked to get that and I guess B G B is maybe not listening, but thanks at their end as well for coming to the table. I think this is a really good result, in particular for FERC, who we really want to support and allow to move forward in their process that is really helping the community in ways that we really need it right now and all the years moving forward. So happy to support that partnership.
I'd, I wanted to make one comment. I just have a chance. I'm, uh, appreciate, appreciative of Shannon and Keely for the hard work on this. I'm disappointed it was necessary extremely. I'm also disappointed there's no one from B G B here. I'm thrilled FERC will get the money.
Yeah, yeah.
In a timely fashion.
That's the big win for all of us.
Without going through this again.
All right, so do we need to really, do I need to like adjourn this meeting and then come back? Okay.
Yeah.
All right, anything, any other comments? All right, meeting adjourned. We will move on to our, do, should we wait until two thirty since people aren't really gonna know?
Keely, could we, is there any chance we could have them do, we could open the work session, have them do their committee reports and other matters, or do we have to wait?
Um, I think it would be better to wait.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm sorry, everyone, for calling to order. Yeah, we didn't know that we wouldn't have more to say. So we'll come back at two thirty for our regular scheduled work session.
And we'll close this public meeting and reopen the work session.
Okay.
Okay, thanks.
It is two thirty. I'm gonna call the town council work session for February eleventh, twenty twenty five. Back to order or order for the first time in this second session. We're gonna start out with the FERC presentation. Brienne, are you doing this on your own, or do we have someone with you? Come on down. Welcome. We have a really tricky mouse. It's the opposite of what you would think.
Okay.
Heard, but no one can figure it out every time.
Thank you. Okay, I'm Brienne Snow, Executive Director of the FERC. I'm super happy to be here. I asked to come to basically give counsel an update. And I just have to say, uh, thank you to the town of Breck for for the news that I just received because I'm still kind of floating here. And thank you to B G B for coming together to figure this out for FERC. Uh, we'll talk about the building a little bit further, but I do wanna talk to you about what we've been up to. Great.
Told you. That's what I said. I was like, do we have to set people up for failure? Kind of like testing people in front of you.
Pull the roller down.
Oh.
Forever. Hey.
Wow. I just wanna tell you that this happens to every single person who presents here, so.
That's unfortunate.
I'm sorry.
Okay, I just, I wanna talk to you guys about what has been going on in the last year. It's been a year since I've seen you all. And we are just plugging along incredibly busy and just seeing a lot of, a lot of faces in the community of folks who are needing. This is some of our, our information regarding our clients. As you may have heard, it's really, it's really expensive to live in Summit County. So we are the safety net for those folks who, who might need it in order to stay here. We're serving, the average household size for a FERC family is about three people and their income has gone up. So all of this work around income, we're seeing it in our clientele. So the FERC average income for a household is forty six thousand two hundred, which is still incredibly low. However, it is much higher than it was last, even just last year. Uh, I, I've said this time and time again in every presentation, but a family of three needs to make a hundred and three thousand dollars in this community to make it be able to save a small amount and not rely upon any assistance. So as you can see, there's quite a big gap there. Folks are doing it though, and they're very, they're, they're pulling together one, two, three jobs and trading childcare and doing everything that they can to live in this community. So it's really great. Primary language of our clients has also changed. We used to be about fifty fifty, but we're now seeing about sixty four percent Spanish speakers. I think that some of the economic livability factors are really hitting the Spanish speaking community harder than, than most. Twenty twenty four, we served about eight thousand individuals through all of our programs and just really trying to help them with wraparound services. So it's not just a Band-Aid. We're really talking to them about how to better their life and giving them opportunities for connection to resources, programs that they are eligible for, helping with enrollment and making sure that everybody knows what's out there for them so that they can be successful community members. As a reminder, the federal poverty level, which is a lot of what everything is based on in terms of public program, public programming is twenty five thousand eight hundred and twenty. So imagine living on that here. It's pretty impossible. Our folks are really struggling at forty six thousand, but that leaves them out of a lot of programs. They don't, they're not at the FPL, and so they're just really not able to access some of those programming. So that's why FERC exists. Perfect. Mouse worked. Um, all of our programming is rooted in protective factors. We really want to see community members, we, we believe that strong community members make a strong community. So we're really looking at all of our programs in terms of making sure that parents can feel resilient, providing social connections. It's really important in a community like ours with so much transience and the weather. A lot of people are just really isolated. We want them to be the best parents possible because that is really important for our community, concrete support in times of need. And then just really understanding how to be there for their children socially and emotionally. This is, this is kind of the framework behind all of our, all of our programs at the family center, and this has been this way for, for years and years. As a reminder, we have four core programs. We have the peer community, which is really aimed at Spanish speakers. It's really connecting folks to peer support. We have a men's and a women's program. We have social groups. We have events and we have a parenting program that is home visitation. So we get to go right into their home and help them out there. Uh, we have community health, which we help with health insurance navigation. We really make sure that they understand their health insurance. We find that a lot of folks are doing okay until they have an injury or an illness that takes them out, and then they can never recover financially. We help them with public benefits assistance. So anything that they're eligible but not enrolled for, uh, to, we help them through that. And then some medical bill assistance and hospital care programming. It's just making sure that that is not the reason why they're not thriving, which oftentimes it is. We have a financial empowerment program, which is comprised of wraparound case management. It's really around goal setting with the family. We look at housing. We provide some folks housing scholarships. We have a Housing Justice Coalition, which is made up of families with lived experience of housing insecurity to help guide our programs. Uh, we have utility assistance, and then we have a community emergency rental assistance program that all of the towns in the county have provided money to. It's just a small stipend to get through an emergency situation. And last but not least is our community food markets. We have a food market in Breckenridge right here in town, and then Dillon. We also have a Food Equity Coalition, who is made up of folks with lived experience of food insecurity that helps guide our programming, and they have done a ton of work. And then we have a Food Access Advisory Board named FAB. That is really looking at how to be more effective, how to work together as food providers in the community, and also how to change policy and make our food systems a little easier for everybody in the community. So doing some advocacy work as well. Just gonna go through our programs really quickly and highlight some of what we've been up to. So this is our peer support program. This is, this is parenting. This is newcomers. This is folks that have been in the community for a long time that just feel like they need a little extra support. The reason why it's focused on Spanish speakers is because there's not a lot of mental health providers here, and we have found that this bridges that gap in a fairly significant way. So we've provided almost three thousand visits last year and offered forty three support groups. It's a really robust program. Just last year, we really started engaging Spanish speaking men, and it's been very, very successful. People are struggling here and especially right now. So it helps to have an outlet and a way to talk about things. Financial empowerment, those are our case management ser- services, and we've served almost seven hundred children and adults through that program. We've given away four hundred thousand dollars in in rent subsidies, rent scholarships. What happens is they work for us, with us for a period of six to twelve months and really work for stability. And we help them with a rental stipend each month to encourage them to be able to actively participate and really see the benefit of increasing their income. Community health, we were able to serve thirteen hundred children and, and adults. And we submitted over four hundred applications for public benefits and Connect for Health Colorado. So getting people insured is a really great way to make sure that there is a safety net there in case anything were to happen. Our food market, which you guys have heard so much about, we have been incredibly busy. We have had some really cool accomplishments this year, but I have to pause and say we could not do it without you guys. There are no federal and state grants for, for this program. In fact, there are no foundation grants that allow us to buy directly, that, that allows us to buy food directly. And so we really count on our local community to be able to run a food market. And namely nicotine dollars has been a game changer for us. We were able to serve over, we, we gave over twenty seven thousand visits last year. And so you guys have all been to the grocery store. It is expensive right now, and we are so grateful to have our local support in this program because we feel like it's the most meaningful program that we have. It's the way to affect change the quickest. And so I just wanted, I just wanted to say thank you. After three years of an online ordering platform, we just upgraded that integrates with our Salesforce database, which is really exciting because then when I come and do presentations, I actually have relevant data. And we don't have to go back and use our time to enter that data. So we're being efficient and we have some really cool statistics. We still continue to offer a client choice model. Our user, our interface is very simple. It's really designed for anybody that might be low literacy or might not just maybe not very technical, just push the buttons and there's pictures of everything. We upload inventory every week. There's thirty languages and we give everybody a point system so they're able to shop with points and so get a, really do the practice of budgeting. We've had three hundred and seventy six different options of products. If any of you have ever came into the food market, you know that eighty percent of everything, probably closer to eighty five, is all fresh. It's all, it's all stuff that is really expensive in the grocery store. We try to stay away from those cans of soup and mac and cheese because our, our folks are telling us they can afford that. What they can't afford is a gallon of milk. So we're really proud of this. Every dollar donated to FERC, we can buy six dollars worth of food. So in the upcoming year, we're gonna provide over seven million dollars worth of food. That helps people's budgets. If they can save money in food, they can pay rent, they can pay childcare. And those, in case you were wondering, are still the themes of the day. How do I, how do I afford my rent? How do I afford food? And how do I afford my childcare? And please, please, please don't let there be any emergencies like new tires or a broken down car or a health emergency. And so we're just doing our best to make sure that we're really focused on food because that is where we can make our dollars stretch further. This is just a graph showing you how much it has changed. You guys have seen this year over year. We are anticipating over thirty one thousand visits in the upcoming year. And we are, we're committed to doing that. It basically saves folks about a thousand dollars, little under a thousand dollars per month on their grocery bill, which again can be put right back into housing or childcare or gas or whatever emergency arises. And so we find this to be the best way right now to combat what is going on in this community with our low income residents. We feel like it's really important to have equity on the forefront of everything we do. And we are doing that through making sure that those with lived experience are guiding our programming. We run all programmatic decisions through the coalition or it comes from the coalitions. These programs are for people and they're by those people. And so we really want to make sure that everybody understands that that is still what we are committed to doing moving forward. And we have had basically every single one of our successes within our programs because of these folks. And so we're gonna continue on to make sure that they have a voice in the process. We also appreciate Volunteers' Little Plug. We've had over five thousand volunteer hours contributed. It's a big deal. It's how we can do things. There's over three hundred folks that come and help us out, and we really truly could not do the kind of work we do without the support of the community, and that looks all kinds of different ways. And so we're very appreciative. Um, the Soul Center. So we are getting closer. This is the rendering of the Soul Center. We will be putting on some more tours when it, when it warms up a little bit, and then we hope to have a ribbon cutting this year. So we're looking at late fall, early winter to get in there and start really working. For those of you don't remember, it's a, a big partnership between many people, but it will be Housing Building Hope and FERC. And we're really excited because we think that right now is the time that we need to be efficient and collaborate and share costs. And so this is going to be a really unique way of trying to figure that out. And Kellen and I have all kinds of great ideas and we'll see what works out. But we are so excited to move into this building. Our clients are really excited and we're really excited to be on the side of the community and get to interact with our Breckenridge folks more. Also, there's a thrift store opening. Seems to be the most important.
Yeah, everyone's excited.
Um, yeah, so thank you all. I did not come here to ask for anything. It's a weird day. I am usually here begging. However, we are plugging along. We are doing the work. We are here. We are here for this community. So if anybody needs anything, please don't hesitate to call. But just please remember to pat yourselves on the back because legitimately, we could not do this work without you. And so I just wanted to come here and say thank you. And that comes from my staff and my board and our clients. So thank you.
Thanks, Brienne. Are there any questions?
No, I'm just curious, with the shifting client data going from English to Spanish speakers, have you also seen a trend in what part of the county your clients are coming from?
So they're still scattered all over the county, and it's always an interesting demographic, right? We know that only twenty percent of our clients right now live in Breckenridge. However, most work over here. And so it's
Most what? I'm sorry.
Most work over here. So there is this idea of where is everybody at? And it's really hard to track them down because they don't usually work in the community that they live in. And so it's just kind of shaking up a little bit. We have folks though in every, every community, and then we do have a lot of folks that have moved outside of Summit County and do commute in. But honestly, there's not a lot of change from year over year. We have clients moving to Breck and then Breck clients moving to Dillon and so on and so forth, Dillon Valley. And so it's just kind of moving and shaking.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
For that. And thank you for this update. I mean, it's a great reminder what you all do for this community and just the, the great needs in this community that.
Yeah, we have a very resilient community. Our clients are amazing and incredible and are doing really great things for the community. And so they should be thanked too. It is a great, it's great to be able to provide a service that allows folks to stay here and continue to contribute. And so that's what we're really committed to doing, and things are getting challenging, of course. But we are, we know what we're doing is meaningful and impactful, and so we're gonna continue to do it. And we hope that we have the community's support moving forward. And every time I come here, it feels like we do.
Brienne, um, we had at one point talked about bringing food and maybe having some mobile food. And then we were updated last week that just with the changing political climate, that some of the people who were supposed to come to FERC for food weren't showing up. And I'm just curious, have you, do you do much mobile food delivery? And are you planning to do more, or is that not part of your guys' system right now?
So we don't have a formal mobile food market. We have been known to go ahead and do whatever it takes to make sure that people have what they need. So we certainly have had some informal ways of getting food out. This was pretty significant. We saw, you know, about forty people no show for their food appointment, which is a lot more than the the, the six that we might get in any given other day. So we're trying to see if this is a trend or if there was some, some just trepidation or hesitation that, that might change. So we're really watching closely this week to see what clients are feeling like doing. But we're not opposed to doing what it takes to make sure that people have food. I think it's really important. We're also going to do some marketing around the fact that folks might not remember that they are able to get food for a neighbor. If their neighbor can't come, we, we make it really easy. It's just sign up, you walk in, you grab your stuff and you don't have to wait. There's no more waiting in line, none of that stuff. And so we're going to do whatever it takes to make sure that kids and families are getting fed.
And then one more question. We talked a little bit about, I know you're not here to make an ask and I'm not expecting this council to, but I do want to keep people sort of up to date with the information. So that if it comes to needing money, that it's not the first time this group has heard about it. Can you just talk a little bit about what the federal and state funding and sort of what you're looking at moving forward?
Yeah. So we're looking about just, just slightly under a million dollars of state and federal funding that could be impacted. It's not really known by us or really anybody else at the moment, what that will look like and what that will shape out to be. We hold several reimbursable grants with, with those entities. And so some of them were halfway through, some of them were just starting and some of them were waiting on contracts. And so what we're doing is just being very careful about what we do. And we're pretty used to it. So we're just making sure that we're watching the budget really carefully. We're listening to news sources and we're trying to make sure that we do the most we can with the limited funding that we have. But we have an amazing board that is really watching and looking over our financials to ensure that, that we are going to be okay and we're going to be able to continue to serve folks. Covid brought all kinds of things to light, but one of the biggest things is, is really be ready and be nimble for anything because everything could change at a moment's notice. And so I will say that the, the board really stepped up to make that a reality for us and, and made sure that we had some reserves and, and just really were trying to ensure that no matter what happens, that we would have time to breathe and make decisions. So right now, we're, we're moving forward, but we're moving forward slowly and cautiously to make sure that we're, we're ensuring that every dollar goes to the right place to make the biggest impact for the community.
Thank you for that summary. Anything else? Brienne, you know, this community relies on you. I think that statistic about seven million dollars of food and thirty thousand people is just really incredible and shows the impact of FERC and that this community just couldn't do it without you. So thank you for your energy that you put in this. It seems like a tireless effort and we really appreciate all that you're, you and your group does and your board as well. We're really grateful.
It's partnership. Thank you guys so much.
Thanks for coming and sharing your good news. All right, we have the chiefs. Chief Owen and Chief Nelson. Red, white and blue.
Thank you.
Welcome. Thanks for coming and.
Thank you for the opportunity. We never go anywhere by ourselves individually. We, we have a saying in the fire service, two in, two out. And so when you go into a fire, you go in as a team of two and there's always two people on the outside to bail you out if you get in trouble. So I think we have some of our governing body back here and keeping a close eye on us and ready to bail us out if you get into trouble. Thank you for the, the time. We hope to only take up about ten minutes, just sharing what we have to share today and then open it up for any curiosities, questions. Introducing ourselves, my name is Drew Horn. I serve as the Fire and EMS chief. As I like to say, I'm responsible for anything that has boots or tires on it. And this is
Jay Nelson, chief executive officer and fire marshal. So anything he's not responsible for, I get to be responsible for.
So we're the, we're the dynamic duo of red, white and blue. So I wanted to start by sharing a story and this, this just sort of hit me today. I had a dentist appointment during my lunch break today. And before she got to cleaning, my dental hygienist began to ask me about insurance and property insurance. Unfortunately, the, the building that she's in, their insurance carrier just dropped their property insurance. And very much a panic situation. They're concerned about their, their HOA dues going from somewhere in the ballpark of three hundred and fifty dollars to up to thirteen hundred dollars a month. So that's a real impact on people. The reason I'm sharing that is because I think we clearly recognize what our role is in the community and it's not just responding to calls. As we like to tell our employees, our primary responsibility is community risk reduction, which is preventing the emergency before it ever happens. The reason here, we're, we're here today is that we've kind of hit a nexus in our, in our forecasting and our planning and our ability to do that. We're reaching out to groups that we feel are our critical partners in the community. And obviously the, the town and, and town council unquestionably critical partners for us. So this is an early conversation. Our goal, as it says up here, is to maintain a world-class organization for our world-class community. We do believe that. We do live that every day. When we get to our mission statement, it's together, starts with the word together. Building a safer community through prevention, preparedness and response. And when we think of together, we think of, of the relationships that exist throughout the community. Very inspiring what, what FERC is doing and I don't know that we're going to be able to top that, quite frankly. But to, to break the ice a little bit, we are anticipating our board adopting ballot language at our board meeting next Thursday to place two questions on the May sixth ballot, the May sixth election. The two questions, one will be a mill levy question. And the second will be a question that exempts us from some language that has been mandated on special districts by the state out of their special session, special session, September of twenty four. And I'll let Chief Nelson get into that in a minute. But just to frame the conversation a little bit, we've given you kind of the long form here and we certainly don't intend to go through that all today. That's provided for you to marinate on a little bit, digest. What we're really looking for out of, out of this today is, is again to, to engage our, our partners, but also we're looking for some feedback. We're looking for any considerations that you might have as we move forward through this process. In addition to any blindsides that we might not be aware of, concerns that are unique to the town that we haven't taken into consideration. We do meet with Shannon and Scott on a monthly basis. And so we feel like we have some good peripheral vision of, of the, the interest of the town and, and the broader interests of our community. But that doesn't, that doesn't restrict us from, from getting out and speaking to people more. A couple of key points that I, I'd like to make before I turn it over to Chief Nelson. We have not, as an organization, we have not approached the taxpayers since two thousand and six. And so our intention is that this ask is, is another generational ask. That what we ask for and hopefully what our, what our community supports us in will take us into the next two decades. Why don't I let you talk a little bit about the House Bill and, and how that's impacted us?
Thank you. So House Bill twenty four B one zero zero one, which was adopted in the extraordinary session or the special session that the legislature held at the end of twenty twenty four. What that does is it lowers the residential assessment rate. That's what we use to calculate our revenues in. We're primarily residential. We have very little commercial property tax that comes in. So that changes that from seven point two percent down to six point one five percent. So pretty significant reduction in the revenues that are coming in based off the residential assessment rate. It also placed a five point two five percent cap maximum on our revenues per year. So back in, I would say the early nineties, the fire district went in what was called debrused or got rid of any kind of revenue cap that was placed on the district by the legislature or at the time the Tabor, the taxpayer bill of rights. And so this reenacts that and makes us go back through a debruising or a removal of that cap. In with these, with mainly that reduction in the residential assessment rate, the increase in cost of everything from fire engines to health insurance. By twenty twenty six, we'll be into deficit, deficit spending. So having to pull money out of our reserves that we don't want to do.
I think kind of a last final point that we're make, that we'll make. We've had a number of new board members on our governing body. The previous board, as it existed, was already in conversations about approaching the community. We have, over the last nineteen years, obviously been progressively coming to that nexus of expenditures outrunning revenues. We're certainly seeing all of the, the cost increase. I know that as a town, you're, you're probably seeing those too and manufacturing. The example that we like to share, which you'll see in here is the, the, the cost increase in just the, the price of a fire engine. So a fire engine that we purchased a few years ago cost us eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Just three to four short years later, we just signed a contract for the exact same fire engine at one point four million dollars.
How much?
One point four million. Yeah. But we're seeing it, we're seeing it across our entire budget. We're seeing the cost of health insurance went up eight percent this year for us. So really hitting that, hitting that nexus. House Bill twenty four B, as, as I like to describe it, didn't help. It, we, we felt that we had, you know, maybe financial agreement with our community when they approved our, our nine mills back in two thousand and six. Not to be too critical of the legislature, but I think the best way to describe it is that they moved the goalposts on, on our financial plan. And so we've been working with our, our finance officer. We've run through a number of different scenarios. We've looked at a number of different increments on what we felt was responsible to, to go to the community and ask for. And thirteen mills became our, our sweet spot for that. Eleven mills still left us in deficit spending after five years. It's going to get us a little further out. It's not sustainable over the long run. And fifteen mills was, was what we felt was excessive. So that's how we got to thirteen mills. Again, there's a lot of details involved in this conversation. And I think really we just wanted to, to, to get out in front, come speak to folks early on. Give you an opportunity to, to digest that, to marinate it. And then we've left you with our business cards. Both Jay and I are, will hap- happily sit down with anybody. We do love coffee, so. But if, if you'd just like to chat more or, you know, give us a good pulse of our community, we're always interested in, in, in forums or, or groups that would, that would benefit from a conversation. And so we're certainly open to that as well.
Great.
We're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Questions for the chiefs? Jay?
I was curious of your way in whether like there is, have you done any preliminary survey results on how this question would be taken by our community and how to phrase it?
We really haven't, you know, we've, we've had that dialogue internally and I'll just be real transparent with you. You know, we watched, we watched how this was navigated that. And as a resident, Jay and I are both residents of, of our fire district. I'm a resident of the town and I, having received that survey, really the impression, well, the way that, that I received it, I'll say, was that they didn't know what they needed. And I think how we would like to show up is that we do know what we need. We feel like we're prudent with, with taxpayers' dollars. We have a five-year capital expenditure plan that is really designed to maintain the world-class organization that we have. And we feel like we have the deliverables to support that. You know, our elevator speech and not just when we're, you know, in this situation, but how I like to broadcast our organization is that we are one of seventeen dual accredited agencies in the nation of over thirty thousand fire departments. So we are doing the work to validate our mission. We have a cardiac arrest save rate of roughly forty percent versus the national average of ten percent. So the work that we're doing is saving lives. We have a ninety nine point nine percent patient satisfaction rate. And so we're very resolute in, in the work that we do. The mission, it's validated through accreditation processes. So a hundred and forty one performance indicators that we answer to every five years with an annual compliance report every year. So we know what we need. The question for us, we really feel that's why it's a ballot question. We, we need to know if the community supports that or not, but it's not going to change the fact that we are going to be dipping in the reserves next year if we don't ask the question. So we feel like to a degree, we don't, we, we truly don't have a choice in the matter. We can change our business model, we can change our service model. As we've shared with Shannon and Scott, we are not going to go around and say babies are going to die, right? We're going to put our best foot forward regardless of, of what, what the answer to this question ends up being. But that's a long answer to your question. No, we did have the discussion about surveying and we didn't feel that it was necessary for our current situation.
Right. Thank you.
Yeah, it seems like you're, I mean, the dual accreditation, I, as I got up to speed, I learned how special and unique it is and how much red, white and blue does. I'm wondering, refresh us, when did the Gallagher amendment repeal due to the
So that
funding stream?
Gallagher amended in two thousand and eighteen. And that walked the fire district at that seven point two percent residential assessment rate. But it doesn't allow us to collect any additional monies from that. And so that, you know, we're kind of hamstrung by that. And then now the reduction of that residential assessment rate is going to have some additional effects as the state is no longer doing any backfill. So we did have about a million dollars in backfill that came in, but that's no longer being, being offered or, yeah.
The Gallagher, the Gallagher amendment, for those, for those that aren't familiar, it's, it's the commercial and residential assessment rate. We're primary residential, as you know, I think we're less than, we're, we're less than ten percent commercial in our fire district. So we really look and focus at the residential assessment rate. The Gallagher amendment would continuously drop that residential assessment rate. So we had the opportunity to go to voters and ask them to hold us at the current number, which over the years, I Um, which uh over the years, uh, residential assessment rate had started up around twenty percent. And when we locked in with Gallagher, Gallagher, it was at the seven point two, seven point two. Um, the new house bill again starts to take us down. So um Jay hates it when I use this term, but it's over the years, it's just a death by a thousand cuts. Um, but, you know, also, uh, you know, the the way that we approach our financing is that we, you know, we want to we want to be in a planning position. We don't want to come to the taxpayers when we're in crisis mode. Um, we're not in crisis mode, but if we don't address this, um, we're not going to be able to continue the momentum in the service that we provide. That's very, that's very clear to us.
Thanks for all the great work in the community and taking the time to get us smarter on the the ballot initiative. I'm curious, what's the annual impact of the thirteen mills? Is that five mils, six mils? What's?
So it's a four mil increase. We're at nine mills right now, so thirteen would take us or four more mills would take us up to that thirteen.
Yeah.
Put us in line with the rest of the or the other fire district in the county as well.
What's the dollar amount annually that that generates for you?
Yes, Todd, I don't know if I have that number for you right now. Um.
Ballpark.
I'm looking at the right.
Drew, if you want to look at that and I'll ask Jay a question.
Yeah.
Um, with the, you know, sort of just the wildfires in California, and then we keep getting notification about the Forest Service budget getting cut and cut, and they're not providing some of the um patrol services and things that they've done in the past. And I'm curious because we talked a little bit about your patient success rate, and that's incredible. And, you know, humans are obviously our number one um resource to protect, but I'm also curious what you guys are doing or if you see um any changes in your efforts going forward, just knowing that um, you know, wildfire is changing and um definitely going to be able to rely less on the Forest Service. Are you guys, do you guys have any new things that you're planning to do or um? What's the next step there?
Yeah, so uh Chief Hone and I have had several conversations regarding kind of how we can help fill some of those voids. And so, you know, through our programming and enhancements of programs such as our wildfire program, uh, that's where we would be able to help with that. So um, looking at putting in wildland specialists uh into the organization to help with mitigation inspections, help with the uh pile burns that go on in the community um and really be ready for that response in the community if we were to have a wildfire. Um, so those are programs that we would look to expand um with a mill levy increase. And that would be through our um community risk reduction analysis that we do in the community. So um, yeah, we've had conversations of how to enhance some programming.
Mm-hmm.
Um, especially around wildland, um, and we would continue to explore those as we navigated um any kind of, you know, passage of any kind of ballot
Yeah.
uh question in the community.
It feels like if that's part of the messaging package between wildfire and um and just the success rates that you have said, it feels like there's a lot to be um to gain momentum behind, I would think.
To your question, um, the short answer is uh roughly four million dollars. The long answer that we didn't intend to get into this conversation, but um, I think it's of value. Uh, when we asked the taxpayers in two thousand and six for um the nine mills, um, the ballot language says up to, and so our intention is to sa- take the same approach that we took in two thousand and six, which is to not go up to the full thirteen amount right away. Um, that's why we're kind of framing it as a generational ask. So that two thousand and six, they started out at, I believe, eight mills, went to eight point five and didn't go till ni- to nine until twenty twelve or twenty thirteen. Um, and and did put out, you know, a press release to the community that, you know, we've moved to this to this nine, and this is the reason why. Um, but it wasn't during the subprime mortgage crisis. It was afterwards, and it was truly to fund uh a capital expenditure plan, which was a a newer concept for the district at the time. So our intention is to take the same approach, to not start out at thirteen um to ratchet that up over, hopefully over the course of two decades. Um, and to not have to go to the taxpayers every two, three, five years um and exhaust them with with questions like this.
Well, it sounds like you've been hit with inflation and then already having like revenue reduce, so you're kind of, you know.
Double whammy.
Yeah, kind of a double whammy there.
That's where, that's where I do this. The wor- the worlds are, the worlds are colliding, right? But
Thanks for the insight there on the relative scale. I was just curious. So it's helpful.
How much of your budget depends on any federal, federal resources?
We don't um, we don't receive a lot of federal resources. I mean, there are some pass-throughs which may be most of it is, most of our grant funding is state grant funding. So two big ones, one is a an E, well, what's referred to as an E M T S grant, and that's primarily for uh EMS-focused um capital expenditures. So we've been able to a- access that grant successfully fifty fifty um for ambulance purchases. Uh, two of our three ambulances have been acquired through E M T E T S grants. Um, all of our cardiac monitors, which are about forty-five thousand dollars apiece, are on that E M T S grant and then various other medical equipment. The other one, uh, there's two uh wildfire-specific grants that we access um um pretty uh reliably on an annual basis. Um, those are also state grants, and uh in the past, those have helped uh fund um our wildland positions. So the individual who is now our division chief of wildland and community preparedness um has written those grants and funded his own position for the last three years. So um, the two big federal grants, the Assistance to Firefighter and the Safer Grant, which is a staffing grant um are really, um, I I would say cost benefit on those is not there. We've applied for them in the past. We've been successful with a safer grant, and it's a progressive tapered-off um commitment to fund additional positions. Um, they, they do become difficult for us because when you look at our financial picture, um, we look good. Um, that's not something that we're apologetic about because we feel that that our planning is prudent for our community. Um, we don't want to take unnecessary risks. Our board does have a financial policy um that we maintain a fifty percent um reserve to annual operating expense in addition to five years planned capital expenditure, and we spend about a million dollars on average a year in capital expenditures, fire trucks, bunker gear. The coat and pants that you see them wearing, those are thirty-five hundred dollars apiece just for the coat and pants. So you stick the road, fire, rescue, anything, and you're going to pay about double um is is what what we feel. Um. So part of this is is um again to help us maintain that board policy, uh, that board reserve policy. Um, it may seem excessive to some, but what we like to highlight is um, and again, not to be alarmist, but we all just watch California. Um, we watched the Marshall Fire down in uh Boulder. We watched the East Troublesome Fire up in Grand County. Um, you know, time and time again, and what we learned very clearly from uh Grand County is that community recovery um is a big lift. And so as an organization, if we were to find ourselves in one of those situations, we still have to put boots on the street. We still have to respond with our ambulances. We still have to protect the community for the next event. That's why I think between the executive leadership and the board, we feel that a fifty percent um reserve to operating expense policy uh is is reasonable and maybe conservative, quite frankly. So.
Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you guys very much. Um, we obviously want you to be successful, and so um just not having had the chance to sort of review all the information and everything, I think um we'll be talking about this again and um and how we can support you in this endeavor. So thanks for coming and getting us up to speed, and thanks for all you do in the community.
We appreciate it.
Yeah.
Thanks for the time.
Our pleasure.
All righty.
And we didn't have to use the mouse.
Yeah. Well done avoiding that. All right. We're going to move on to planning commission decisions, and um Keely gave me some advice that I um would like to pass on to this group is that um when the planning commission decision um heading comes up, that it's really our opportunity to discuss whether we have a a call-up. We shouldn't be giving any opinions on things that are ongoing, and so we're not going to be weighing in on pending applications. Um, we're really just going to let staff know if we're going to call something up. So um, I've been my uh presenting that way too openly for discussion, so I'm just putting you guys, giving you a little notice that um that we'll only discuss a call-up. So from here on out.
And technically, if we have technical questions, we should just reach out to staff directly then?
Perfect. Yep, exactly right. Um, I don't know if Keely's on, but that she was, she even reminded me that that was um an appropriate way to get that information, so.
Before we start, should I step out on this one?
No, because yours is ongoing, and so there's nothing we can discuss about um anything.
Yeah.
Yeah. So the only thing that was a final decision this time was the Wahaqah food truck. So if you want to call that up, first of all, then you've never eaten there. If you want to call that up, because it's delightful. We want to support that. Okay, moving along to legislative reviews. Oh, sorry, Mark.
Uh, just clarification, um, Todd's project was approved last Tuesday night. So it is subject to a call-up.
Oh, okay.
Understood that. So yes, if you wouldn't mind stepping up, that would be fabulous.
Thank you for that. Should have told him to use the back door.
He's faster.
All right. Does anyone want to call his project up?
No. Any questions for planning?
Questions for, I mean, we can't really question it, right?
I need process.
Process?
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
Okay.
Okay, we're moving on. Todd, you can come back. All right. Legislative review. Thanks, Mark, for clarifying that. Um, Big Sky Employee Housing Unit Development Agreement.
Um, so the Big Sky Employee Housing Unit Development Agreement um is um between the town and Jennifer Wright um to convert the unit from commercial use to employee housing. There have been no changes since first reading.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Ellie? No. All right, sounds good. Move on to lighting code modifications, second reading.
Um, for the lighting code changes, um, the primary changes include adjustments to the enforcement and penalty section. Um, a removal of the lighting section in the Ridgeline and Hillside Development Policy and the addition of an exemption for building code required emergency lighting. Um, there's been one change um from first reading, and that is a minor adjustment to the definition for retrofit light fixtures to allow for shields like these um and other potential solutions that are approved by the Community Development Department. Um, and that's it.
Great. Thanks for bringing those demonstrations in. Any questions? Ready to go to second reading? Perfect.
Thank you so much.
All right, public projects update. Lot going on already.
You are correct. Um, I don't have anything additional than what we put in the memo, but I'm happy to take questions.
Okay. Any questions for Shannon?
Um, I was informed, and I just want to make sure that um we're all on the same page here, is that the pavilion improvements will not impact the high school baseball season, right?
That is correct. My understanding is the high school baseball season is over May tenth-ish?
Okay, so we'll just take that into consideration. Great. And John says true as well. Wonderful. Any other questions? Thanks, Shannon.
You're welcome.
Just gonna fly right on through. We're into sustainability. Jesse?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I don't have much to add, except um Matt, who's not here today, did want to let you know that we have issued an RFP for the Phase One study um for geothermal feasibility here at the sort of Town Hall Professional Building um properties. And so we've also directly reached out to to some of the consultants that we've touched base with in the past, but then it's also obviously publicly available. So those are the only updates. Happy to take any questions.
Questions for Jesse?
This material's management too, or is that back?
Yeah, yeah.
Um. Scrap pricing, you know, we said it may help commercial composting. Um. With that, or where how we're charging for commercial composting there. That makes sense.
So um. That's a hard question to answer. Oh, I wish I had a better one. Um, so the scrap sets their pricing for all of the different material streams, and they have made trash and then unsorted construction and demolition waste the highest. Um, and so all the other waste streams or recycling streams are are less than. And so the way that the haulers set their pricing is based on that sort of trickle-down through their services, plus any fuel surcharges and et cetera. And then it it comes down to the consumer. The challenge is that our town contract for commercial businesses downtown adds another layer of um pricing complexity that we have some control over um because of the way we have done our methodology. And regardless of what the scrap was going to do or is going to do, we have plans to adjust how we do the pricing within that town contract. So I would like to say that we're working and we've heard you very loud and clear on, you know, making that incentive to to composting, but for people outside of that contract for services, you know, we we can expect the composting uh price savings to trickle down to those services. The scrap intentionally set the different waste streams that way to try and encourage.
That's the way I read it.
Yeah.
Um, will this give us a bite at that apple? I mean, this price increase, assuming our our trash hauler will come back and want to raise our town enclosure pricing, then does that give us a chance to have this negotiation?
You mean to o- open back up our contract?
Yes.
Um, yeah, I think we we're having ongoing discussions with the hauler right now anyway. Um, based on our estimates on how many additional restaurants we think want to compost versus how many are composting today. Um, many of the composters, as you know, don't necessarily use the the contracted hauler that we have today. They use a a different, a different hauler. Um, so I I would say that they have been very open and willing um to have this discussion with us, recognizing that it's our intention to try and pass those savings on to folks who are composting. So I don't think we need to wait for these changes to continue that conversation.
Um, and I don't mean to keep pushing and be a whiner on this. I just that we've worked so hard to get a lot of these restaurants to to compost and and um you know, it seems overwhelming to a lot of restaurateurs, but it it it's very doable.
Yeah.
And it's such a high percentage of of the waste stream. And uh, and it creates a lot of methane.
Yeah.
So i- it's just, it it, it's so impactful. I I'm afraid we're going to go backwards while we're incenting everyone else. We're punishing the restaurants, the compost and or compost that have no choice but to use the the uh town enclosures. So um, and and, you know, as you hear all over in the restaurant industry, I mean, the margins are getting tougher and tougher. Um, and then, you know, as you hear all over in the restaurant industry, I mean, the margins are getting tougher and tougher with cost goods and labor and everything else, so. You know, it's, it's double some months, at least it is for us. Uh, we're not gonna quit, but I'm just, I'm really worried about the program.
To that end, and I think I, I teased this at the last meeting, but we did meet with the Vale Resorts Retail and they're very open to helping divert their cardboard stream out of those enclosures through a different method, um, so that we can free up additional space in there for composting, because that's the other piece of this pie. It's not just the pricing, it's that we don't have the space to offer it to everybody. Um, and so, you know, as we understand what that cardboard volume is, um, we'll have more information on, you know, how, how many compost bins can we put where? And what, what does that cost if we had everybody using that system and not the one offs? And there might still be restaurants that choose to do their back door for various reasons. But we just, we're, we're piecing all that information together right now, and I would say that the hauler's been very open to the conversation.
Yeah. So I apologize for continuing to bring it up. It's just, I'm, I'm just very, very concerned. It's something that I very much believe in. And, you know, there's a number of us, Jay included, that, uh, that are very passionate and really have really tried to get our restaurant community to, and we've grown the numbers of people composting quite a bit. We have a great compost hauler in, in the community now. Unfortunately, it's not the hauler we use for our, for our enclosures and um, I just, uh, hope we get something done fairly quickly. And thanks for continuing to listen to me.
Alright.
It's important to be on the record.
Yeah, and you know, of all the, for all the effort we put into material management, the composting has one of the the largest climate benefits of all of it, you know? I mean, we spend a lot of time trying to educate on single stream recycling when really, you know, it's paper, metal, uh, and glass, it's really the, the valuable product in that. Um, but composting just has so much, it's such a large climate benefit that we don't want to give up on composting, certainly.
Speaking of climate benefits, can you, um, just talk a little bit about the Mountain Towns committees? I know that, um, there was a, just a really short thing in here saying maybe council should join some of those committees. I don't know, are you needing somebody from council or are you just leaving it open?
No, yeah, so we'll, so as noted, we'll need a fundraising committee to help, um, help with the local community partnerships, uh, program development, which is certainly the fun one, in my opinion. Um, attendance is kind of the hospitality side, which we do feel like we have pretty well covered with the contractor that's helping uh, Mountain Towns organization do that, and then, um, operations, so. We do not need council members, but if anyone is interested in, in helping join that, um, we will be reaching out to the other jurisdictions um, for staff work or elected help as well.
Okay, great. Anything else for Jessie?
I just wanted to say that I'm really glad to see the incentivizing for, uh, getting sorted through some of our construction and demolition.
Yeah, that was a recommendation. When we pa- when we paused our, our, our forward momentum on C and D, it was, you know, that was one of the key pieces we learned from Pitt King County that made their program so successful. Um, and so we're really happy to see that it's made it into their rate update, of course. Um, and then there's just a few other pieces. An employee being one of them, um, that we're sort of waiting to see stood up before we can circle back on what a C and D policy might look like.
It's a good step forward in our goal.
Yeah.
Alright, and I'm sure everyone read Jessie's, um, memo, but in case you missed it, town cleanup is on May 31st.
With a new calendars.
Yep. May 31st, I think we're, well, I know we're working with community development on a dark sky fixture takeback at that event as well, so we'll dual promote dark sky, um, fixture swaps at that, and then of course, it's also the county household hazardous waste, um, collection, which does HHW electronics, paints, pharmaceuticals, all the stuff you can't recycle in your, in your bin. So that will be the same day.
Did you have a snow date, uh, like contingency plan?
I'm gonna phone a friend? I don't think so. I have not seen a snow date.
Might be worth just to internally flush one out to see if I'm scrambling.
This committee is bigger than me, but I will bring that up, thank you.
Little.
Thank you very much. Um, alright, there's, um, BOSAC minutes.
Can I just, uh, housing? Um, yep, I think Lori is out today. I don't think Darcy was coming down, but we did have a committee meeting today. Um, things are rolling along with housing helps, they have 15 or have had 15 applications and some closes, closures already on those, um, agreements, um, not much happening with buy downs right now. Uh, Stables Village, next phase opened up for lottery yesterday and they had 59 entries in 24 hours. So there's big interest in that.
For how many years ago, Chan?
I think it's eight, yeah, eight. Um, the, we, you guys are gonna see at some point here, the Loge. Um, this, the county is working on the annexation application, so that will come to you here some point soon, and they're also working on just a really, an RP for a really rough design on what could fit on that property if we knocked it down and started from scratch. Um, and then some of you saw the, um, surviving, surviving to thriving, uh, presentation at CAST, and so we had sort of a, um, that similar presentation, but with more Summit County information during the housing committee meeting this morning, so we're hoping to get the slide deck from that and then we'll share with you. It was interesting to hear the Summit County specific information and, and what people think is missing in our housing process, probably more than, some of it was actual housing that's available and some of it was just straight up the process that it takes to actually get in. And all those minutes will be in your next packet.
Was Cory at that meeting?
Yeah.
Okay. Question, one whole thing? No, okay. Um, thanks Shannon. So there's, um, meeting minutes, I don't know, Duke, do you have anything to add, or you don't have to come down, it's? Okay. Alright. Questions? No, thank you very much. Um, committee reports, I think the stage was in there. Any questions?
I had a little confusion over the Park County and the Blue River, the Blue River commuter and those, but I'll, I'll get with that individually. Probably my issue and that. So.
I know he could explain it better.
Yeah.
Pardon me?
Can explain it better.
Yes.
Yeah. We'll let you meet with him, but.
So I think that's a critical corridor.
For sure. Okay, we're into the Breck Events Committee. Thanks, John.
Hi. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Um, I want to first mention what got lost in Spark was the dogs. So I want to, I know you guys had a couple messages about the dog parade, um, two months ago, so I just want to say this openly, working with Maj and the BTO and we're going to change the footprint and, and all dogs will be happy next year and it'll be a smooth process. Um, so changing the time of the start of it and kind of rerouting a, a more optimal way to make that flow better, so.
It's still gonna be Main Street?
Yep, it will still be Main Street. It'll just flow the same way as the race and be spread out so that we don't have a a gridlock of dogs. And it's a super popular event, so we want to make sure it continues, um, working well. Um, additionally, in the memo, uh, the Breck Events Committee talked about snow sculptures. And collectively, as a group, we think the duration should stay the same. Really, that one of the main reasons is just the presentation, you know, if you're bringing your family up here that second weekend and you're looking at Campbell's Chunky Soup, um, you know, that doesn't provide well, you know, show well for Breckenridge, so, um, as a committee, we, we think that the duration as is, um, is, is proper. Any questions on that?
No.
Um, additionally, uh, I just want to mention that, uh, back to Spark, uh, the community collaboration for Biffa, people, other community interested partners, that deadline has been extended towards to February 28th. Um, anybody that's interested in jumping on board with how that's going?
Hey, John, what does that mean? Is that for other artists to apply? Is that local groups? What it, what does that mean?
Uh, my understanding is it means any other arts organization or group that wants to be part of Spark has extra weeks to kind of present their proposal for Spark. To, for Biffa, sorry, not for Spark. Let me start up. Any community arts organizations that want to participate in Biffa have extra time to think about if they wanted to change their proposal based on the fact that Spark will be there. So there's generally a theme for Biffa, the other arts organizations frequently contribute something based on that theme, and so now the theme has shifted a little bit because of Spark. Is that a fair assessment, Tamara? Okay.
Okay, that makes sense, thank you.
Okay.
Alright, any other questions on the events memo?
We're gonna talk about 4th July later.
It's the next.
Right now.
Right next.
One, one more warning in on this one, that we should not use the proper name of the presentation, we should just refer to it as the animation or the circus, if you want to, but.
Talking right now, so you want to keep, keep it going?
Back to you, that was, the plan was you start, I come in later.
Talking 4th of July here, um, again, we met as the Breckenridge Events Committee and collectively looked at some different options based on the direction that council um, gave us to continue, um, looking at, the first, the first question was, how do we keep people into the evening and overnight, um, the restaurant, the restaurant owners and hotel, um, were the ones driving this, like, we need people to stay in Breckenridge, not just come to the parade and, and get out of Dodge. So, um, collectively, we, um, looked at, I need to be careful about what I say with these art learning here, um, this circus event that could take place um, on Main Street in the evening. Marika, would you like to elaborate additionally on anything of those?
Just started. Thought the plan was you were gonna do like three bullet points, I have to start.
Uh, it's super fun up here, you know, love it so much. Um. Got Scott laughing and Shannon.
Too much.
Well, I, it, let's just talk details here, 4th of July is a Friday this year, you know, we feel really, really good. I can talk about what I know. Um, I oversee the, the Firecracker 50, it is the 25th year, um, uh, putting that production in after we, uh, took it over from Jeff Wescott. Our registration is tracking about 20% higher normally this time than last year. So I feel really good about selling that event out. We sold out the Independence Day 10K. These are mostly front range individuals that run these events and then the Strider Race is locals and front range, so I feel really good about bringing people in town for those eh, eh, recreation triathlon is like, I like to call it. 4th of July being on a Friday, we, it may just, it work out itself. Um, the one thing about this circus act that we talked about was closing Main Street, and I know that has been a, a really political topic, um, over the last several years, and we closed during COVID. And the committee, um, collectively felt that that in and of itself would be like a really cool thing to do, the parade ends, but Main Street's still closed, like in the core of Lincoln to Adams, and that people can meander, go to shops, go to restaurants, walk down. This circus event is a big structure that would be built in Main, or sorry, on Main Street, right at the center of Blue River Plaza. Um, it would be quite a spectacle as it gets constructed, it would get people being like, whoa, you know, what's going on for that? Back to what I know, is I know we would promote it for our 1,700, um, race participants, but like, oh, make sure you stay the night and see the grand finale of this circus event, uh, in the evening, and I know that would be a big draw along with, uh, the Breck Tourism Office, which, uh, you know, I'll put on my Lucy voice right now, um, the best I can, was very interested in, in having this type of animation, um, and, and thought it was a, a good thing for, for Breckenridge. Um, once again, it is a Friday, next year's a Saturday. These are financial asks, um, and
Todd, can you talk to us about the schedule for the day? Um, so it's like the, um, in the morning, you would have the bike race and the parade. Um, and then NRO is playing in the afternoon, is that right? Or is that?
Arrow plays in Silverthorn in the afternoon. Dave, you want?
Okay. So there is a concert in, in the evening at 6, okay, and then would this animation be after?
It, it would approximately 8:00 PM, um, but it would, it would be coordinated with that event. There's opportunities also to, let's call them teasers, um, with that, probably within the existing budget that's in the memo, that could be part of the parade, which Lucy spoke about, as well, um, as something maybe in the middle of the afternoon, something small to, to kind of drive up to that evening, uh, event.
And we talked a lot about afternoon animation versus evening animation. Um, nobody has any hard data, but the general consensus from the events and lodging folks is the later an animation is, the more likely people are to stay overnight, if that's what we're really trying to drive. Right? A 3 o'clock animation still means people could leave at 4 and go somewhere else, and 8:00 PM animation probably means they're arranging for lodging that night. We talked about, you know, as John pointed out, right, Friday, Saturday is all we have to do, keep Main Street walkable for the day, and we don't have to pay out for a, an animation, um, we just encourage walkability. We also think it's it is probably unrealistic to assume that any visitor is going to stay downtown all day. It's just not how people are gonna flow. They're gonna go to the parade, they're gonna take a break, they're gonna come back. Or they're gonna go to the parade, stay for the afternoon and leave. It, it is unlikely that anything we do is gonna make one visitor stay on Main Street from 10:00 AM until 9:00 PM.
That's great. Good information. Okay, so it sounds like what you're looking for from us, um, and I would like to stay out of the discussion of whether this is the right animation or not. I mean, it sounds like the Events Committee supports this animation and I'm not sure that any one of us has like more information or expertise in that area. I think what we really need to, um, talk about is, it sounds like if we're um, okay with closing Main Street, which I do want to know if Public Works has, um, had the chance to weigh in on that. And then also, um, financially, is this, um, all coming from the town or is the, like, are you asking for this full amount from the town? Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Um, no, Public Works has not had a chance to weigh in.
Yeah.
What was that, Marika?
Public Works has not had a chance to weigh in yet.
Uh, just maybe a, a question to think about, you know, as we go through this process is that is the last time we had a July 4th on Friday was 2014? And I believe we had fireworks then, and so looking forward in whatever we choose to do here for this, this year, how to use that, how to have comparable metrics and saying, yes, this animation did help, or closing Main Street did change occupancy by X amount. And we really don't have data, we don't have a, a control set for this, really. And so just if there's anything that you guys can think of to be able to come back to us, you know, July 5th and go, hey, so this is what we learned, is that it moves the needle this much. It's gonna be really hard to do that, so any metrics that we can establish with community partners with whether it's sales or, or whatever it might be, I just highly, I think data is really valuable on this.
The one metric that I threw out to the group, because some of you had mentioned it to me, was when we were hypothetically talking about a drone throw that could cost 100 when we were hypothetically talking about a drone show that could cost $100,000. I felt like several people said to me, could we make up $100,000 in revenue in, in restaurant or lodging taxes on that night? It is true that we haven't necessarily been tracking that. So how, how far down can we drill in those economic metrics? I don't know. I need someone like Pam to tell me how we can, if we can look at a day to day comparison, if we have to look week to week, month to month.
Great question. Is that a question we can ask Dave? Can we look at one day, sales tax revenue? I don't know how we would.
Yeah.
The destination.
I know we tried in the past with the Pro Cycle Challenge, I'm sending out a survey, please share. That doesn't work.
Maybe just cell phone data as far as how many people are here.
BTO has that new tracker that we use at Snow Sculptures, right, where we can set a metric, like a a parameter in town that counts how many people are inside that boundary, ideal fencing. We'd have to kind of make some decisions about where we set that. I don't know how large it can be.
Is tracked as well.
Maybe we can, since we don't have this answer, but we're interested in knowing some data, maybe staff can come back with how we could track this.
And I, we have Lucy on, which is not a panelist, and I think she was maybe sending you some information on what the BTO could do. But we can work on, we can work on that with them.
Okay.
You're going to, or you did?
We do need folks to come down.
Yeah, we can't, or, yeah.
You have to come down because the people online can't hear you at all.
I don't think we. I don't think we need to go, this is getting, like, we're going to go into all these different possibilities and that's great. I think the question from council is, could we please figure out some metrics to track whether this works? And whether financially it makes sense to do this again in the future?
Absolutely.
Yeah, but I think we still have a bigger discussion whether to do it or not and what time and.
Yeah, I think I was just trying to, to facilitate a response.
We really need to understand the big picture of the budget as well. So I think there's still a lot to talk about.
And with this, I don't feel prepared to make a decision without Public Works weighing in and seeing how that would change the weekend. Do we have the capacity, the bandwidth, all of that?
I mean, I, I can speak pretty, pretty well to, to what it's like to close that street. I don't think that's a big impact.
It's not really, I think it's less about closing the street because we know they can close the street because they already closed the street. I think the question is, is it the right thing to do and to keep it closed? And what does that do to traffic patterns? And have we worked with red, white and blue to make sure that they know? And just all those normal CIPA conversations that we sort of need that feedback before we really want to commit to something like that.
Fourth, 4th July is a big traffic day. So public safety is a concern. Does it have to be on Main Street? It have to be on a hard surface?
Well, the goal of this was to drive visitation to Main Street, to the town core. It doesn't, I don't believe it has to be on Main Street. It could probably sit in Blue River Plaza. If we wanted to keep Main Street open.
It would fit in Blue River Plaza?
So Lucy says also that keeping Main Street closed would accomplish part of the goal here, which is just keeping people in town as well. So I think that's important.
And just from closing Main Street, I, I can candidly speak, it, it wouldn't be a problem from Public Works and Police i- if that was the direction, you know, they may overrule me, but I'm, I've had conversations for a decade about these type of closures and I'm going to go out on a limb and say, James staring at the back of my head right now, but uh, it would, you can still, you know, Ski Hill Road and Lincoln would be open. Adams would be open. It would just be closing that, the 100 block or 100 and 200 block of.
Okay. So before, so I don't think, I need to know what kind of a timeline we need to make a decision on this because it sounds like there's still quite a bit of information that we're wondering about that we don't have probably all the information. We have some best guesses. So do we need to make this decision in this council meeting today? Or can we wait for two weeks? Based on artists, I'm like, probably this is based on when we need to go under contract with this artist.
When we originally set out for this project, our aim was to have the decision whether it was drones or something else by the end of January. So it is a pretty big push at this point to get everything tied up. I did ask favors of our agents to give me quotes and availability quickly. And I did tell them that we'd have, you know, they're all on hold right now and that we'd have a decision today.
All right. Well, we still don't have the information. So I think we just probably need to take that risk. Are people okay with taking the risk of possibly not being able to get this artist in line be, and get the every, all this information before or?
Kelly, what, what information would we be seeking to acquire between now and then? Like what's?
Well, I mean, just for the pure, I mean, I think it should be a town discussion as to whether we should be closing Main Street on the 4th of July. And I'd really like to have that information and not.
At least people, businesses that are going to be affected by a closure. You know, the businesses in that block that are during the close because what I've heard for years from those businesses is it's great for some, it's horrible for others.
So I think to determine how the businesses feel is going to take a little bit of time. I mean, I, you know, you wanted feedback from the CIPA group. We wouldn't be able to do that today, but I think we could pull that group together fairly quickly and get their feedback on whether or not from an operational perspective, closing Main Street works and they can all manage all the different pieces of it. But I think if you want that feedback from the businesses, it, it's going to take, I mean, if we push really hard, it would at least take till next week.
Can I make a suggestion that we weigh in on the activation? And not on the Main Street closure today so that we can move forward or not move forward, however it goes. And then since it is a mobile structure that we're able to kind of do some outreach to local business and say, hey, you know, what do we want to do with Main Street? Because since we can go either way. But it would be, I think it would be beneficial to provide the events committee with a direction.
I think that's a great suggestion.
I would. Can I amend your amendment? I think we also want input on timing. I'm not convinced 8:00 PM is the best time. I, I think late afternoon before the NRO concert might, might be better, but I, again, like to hear from the business community. Because they're the ones that are telling us that, you know, that, that town emptied. That's what started this whole push.
Well, I think, I feel like Marika, in her point earlier, that, you know, anecdotally, but that keeping those folks in town, the later does keep those folks in town.
For me, who was a concessionaire at the Riverwalk Center for 18 years and cooked a thousand burgers every 4th of July afternoon, I can tell you, animation in the afternoon worked for a lot of years.
And we can do this same activation in the afternoon. The timing, the timing is not necessarily, we're not fixed to a night timing for this particular animation.
And I, I don't know the answer. I just think we're rushing to that decision too quickly. I think we really want to give some thought and have a broader group talk about, you know, good business people that kind of see the flows. You know, when is the right time? You know, do we spend more money having more animation during the afternoon to keep people here? You know, I, we, we all need to kind of see the big picture of the budget here. And I don't want to be the negative guy, but you know, we've, we've approved a three to 350 to $400,000 Spark animation piece for Biffa. Now we're being asked to approve 50 to 60, 40 to 60,000 dollar animation for 4th of July. Are we going to be asked to approve more animation for 4th of July afternoon? And that's on top of BCA's 2.4 million dollar budget that's also already been approved.
So I kind of feel the opposite about this, actually. I feel like we were really, we, like, we asked for animation on the 4th of July. And so I don't, I feel like we're kind of looking at this the wrong way, is that do we want the animation on the 4th of July? Yes or no? And then the details can be fleshed out?
Well, you know, are we going to spend more for the afternoon? I, so the timing is critical, but I, we have to look at the big picture of the budget, you know, and kind of what the charge of these organizations is already, you know, and, and now we're throwing more and more and more at it. It's just, I'm really concerned about it.
Didn't Lucy tell us that animation on the 4th of July was not going to change the, the data on the overnights? Or did I just mishear that? And I thought Lucy told us that from BTO's standpoint, whether we animate or not, people are going to come Breckenridge for the 4th of July just for the parade, the bike race, the things that always happen on the 4th of July. And that it wasn't something that she was telling us desperately, we need something to get more people into town. I thought that's what Lucy told us.
That, that's how I heard it too, for sure. And, and again, if we don't want to do anything a Friday night and then a Saturday night, 4th of July are, are the times where we could get away with doing less.
And we could learn some of that data that we're talking about and take a pause. Sorry.
The, the, no, you're good. The interesting piece there, I think, is we heard from the business community, there was concern that town emptied out. And the question I've gotten, appreciate your lens on the budget. I appreciate kind of that, you know, Lucy's lens on what's going to fill the room nights. And I worry about kind of that branding experience, right? Of like, did that family have the best 4th of July of their life in Breckenridge? Is what we're providing doing that? And then is that important, right, from a branding perspective? Like, is our families coming here and having an amazing day with lots of activities and engagement on the 4th in Breckenridge important for our long-term brand where they book ski visits for the rest of their lives? That to me is like, what's the right dollar amount there? Do we need the circus and the drones? Do we just need the firecracker and some burgers and close Main Street? I don't know the answer to that, but to me, it's more about long-term branding and visitation and less about how Friday night looks.
Well put.
Yeah, that is well put.
Just on top of that, you know, 4th of July kind of falls into the resident, resident bucket of resident goodwill. And, and this really would provide that opportunity to flush families out from the Wellington, from all of our neighborhoods down in town to have that community feel. It gives, it gives families a reason to leave their barbecue at their house and come into town and to have that real community feeling. For all the reasons stated, plus that, I would be in favor of have, moving forward this. I, I think that is what we asked for. You guys have come through twice in really good ways. Which was almost too good. And so I think that this is, this is exactly what we asked for and you, you found it. And I think we should move forward and green light it.
I agree on green lighting it. And John, to your point about do you hit pause? Maybe, but I also worry about the long-term implications of like, what if folks, hey, we go to Telluride from now on? And then does that pull folks away from our community when we really need it? And I, the ask I've got is like, do you do the circus event in the afternoon and drones in the evening? Where it's like, that was the best day ever, you know? Maybe it doesn't work in the budget, but branding is.
Anyone else want to chime in on support? Not support, the financial ask? And then these other details, we can work with the town through CIPA? Someone else has to vote. Marika?
Do you want me to comment or?
I just want you to say whether you support or not support. And if you want to add, you can.
I do support. And also, Dick, if you want to grill burgers, I'm happy to grill with you all afternoon.
I sold that part of my company.
I support just that continued betting on timing and location.
I support it. I think it's a good investment for our locals as well as the town.
Nick?
I'll support it, provided we're going to put a little more energy into the right place in the right time. And I'll support it either way, but at some point, I think we should ask BCA to participate in the funding. Because animation on 4th of July has always been part of their charge along with Biffa. And now we're funding a hundred percent of both. So I, I think we should ask for a partnership, like our other organizations are so quick to do with us. And we should ask for part of the funding.
Okay. I support as well. And Lucy said that we can, she can help, or this business survey could be done. And so I think that would help inform whether Main Street businesses support the closure and then obviously working with the town for, and Public Works and whomever else. But I just think that that stuff really is impactful. And so I think we need to know how people feel about that. Did, is that all questions asked and answered?
I would just like to thank Publicly Beaver Run Conference Center and Resort, who has stepped up and donated their 10 rooms that are required for this production. So we're always looking for sponsors and actually both July 4th and Biffa are publicly and privately funded. It's a partnership that we see with all businesses and our donors.
Okay.
I'd like to hear, because I was worried about that with their staffing transition.
All right. Thank you guys very much.
This is unique to Breckenridge. I just want to end on a, on a positive note. You know, Silverthorn and Frisco are doing music acts. And then I, this would complement what the NRO does. And I know we can't openly talk about what it is, but it is bicycle themed and goes with what Breckenridge is about. And it would, it is something different, you know? It's like, wow, Breckenridge, you know, if you're, Todd is what you're saying. That was pretty cool. You know, I've never seen a 4th of July like that before. So that's, that's the goal of this. So.
All right.
Thanks.
Thank you.
I just think we want to keep it on the radar. Kind of starting right now, how do we get the metrics and the data? So that we're not doing this next year when we're trying to figure out, we've got a weekend, 4th of July, and what are we going to spend our money for? So if we can kind of drill down on how to capture Main Street, how do we, how do we capture revenues? And make some decisions based upon the actual data going forward.
Great. Okay, the Police Department Public Safety update.
All right. Good afternoon, everyone. Good to see some familiar faces from our advisory committee and some people I know and people I've talked to on the phone to have met in person. So hope you guys, hopefully you guys all had a chance to review the memo and look at the different charts and graphs that I've been putting together for you guys. This is really just a first crack to give you guys kind of a roundup of what to expect for statistical comparison and analysis from the Police Department. Think overall, the goal is to continue doing these quarterly with department specifically. And then around this time each year, have a yearly wrap up for our department, comparing it to other county agencies, other resort municipalities. Seeing what information you guys would like to see in, contained inside that report, or if it's even feasible for us to pull that information. But any questions on what was presented to you? Or would you like me to go through anything for you guys? I'm open to whatever you want to do.
Thank you. It was really interesting information. Do people have specific questions, Marika?
When you are giving warnings, are you tracking them? Are you tracking them to the person? Are you tracking them to the person? So I give Jay a warning on Thursday, and then Kelly cites him the following week. Does she have access to the warning I gave Jay?
We, so we do have verbal warnings and written warnings. Typically, on a traffic stop, we'll give a verbal warning. Just because if you're gonna fill out paperwork to do a written warning, you might as well fill out a ticket, you know? But that being said, there is tracking through criminal databases. So if I stop this person, I can then run their name and see when the last time they were contacted. Fortunately for us being in a small town, if we have repeat traffic offenders, our CAD incident shows this person was stopped by this officer on this day and this officer on this day. And we can see what they were stopped for. Hopefully, that officer that stopped them, you know, whether it's in Breckenridge or Silverthorn, Frisco, wherever in the county, since we share information, we can see what they were stopped for. So if an officer in Frisco stops this person for speeding, and then officer in Dillon stopped them for speeding, we stopped them for speeding in the previous two times they got a warning. It's like, all right, you haven't learned your lesson. So we have different ways of tracking those things and being able to resource it to see like, hey, you've had your chance.
So let's, let's go with the, the elephant in the room for me.
Sure.
Off-leash dogs. Are you tracking those warnings or not?
So for a warning for off-leash dog, we typically give a written warning for that. So that is tracked. And that's our, our code enforcement officers who do that. So yeah, typically, anything like that with like trash, parking, dogs off leash, general typical quality of life issues that I know that affects everyone differently. Those are typically written warnings for those instances. Absolutely. Good to see you all. You know, I just, some things, like as I had already submitted it and looked at it, you know, some of like the acronyms that are inside of there. I'm like, yeah, maybe they don't understand what LAF means, you know, like little things like that. So like any of those things will like hammer out and, you know, maybe more clearly define those for you guys going forward. Some of the numbers are kind of shocking because whenever I run like crime rates, you know, Breckenridge, Vail, Steamboat, some of these bigger resort communities, we're right up there with like Aurora, Denver, Colorado Springs in terms of crime rate. But that's just because of the per capita, changing the numbers for us. And the other thing that take into account is, as we were talking about events and drawing people into town. Yeah, they run the per capita, and everything is based off of our population around 5,000 people. They can't account for however many people we bring in for all these events. But, you know, whether there's 5,000 people in town or 35,000 people in town, we have the same staffing and we'll get the job done. So to John's point, yeah, let's have a great event for the town and keep it on brand. But whatever you guys need us to do, we'll figure out a way to, and I work with John and Public Works and Red, White and Blue, and we'll figure out a way to make it the safest event possible and have it to where people can enjoy it.
Basically, just a staffing question. I, you know, seeing the, the rates, the gross rates, you know, total rates seem to go down 22, 23, 24 or level or whatever.
Yeah.
And so does staff turnover kind of increase during that time as well?
Yeah, there was that chart included on the total calls for service one, and that had HR pull those numbers for us. And it was kind of shocking. And I think it was 2022, we had like a 74% turnover rate. A lot of that was because during COVID, no officer wanted to leave their job and try to transfer to another agency because they know they had job security in the agency they were in. But as things kind of loosened up and things got back to normal, I think a lot of people realized like, okay, like I can look for other opportunities. You know, we always know we're gonna have around a 20, 25% turnover rate, being in law enforcement agency up here, which is kind of the nature of the beast. But, you know, we've started recruiting more locally, looking at alternatives. And, you know, I've, our last two officers that graduated training, one grew up here, went to high school here, went off to college. She came back. Now she's working for us. One's been a resident of the county for over a decade. He's now working for us. Two people I have in backgrounds right now, both locals, own up here, have been in the community for a while. So we're really trying to transition away from, cool, we'll take whoever wants to apply, more to let's focus our efforts on hiring people that are already invested in the community and reduce the likelihood that they'll want to move back home or look for another agency.
Great. So you're feeling like we've got a path to addressing.
That's, that's what I've been working on since I've taken over the administrative sergeant role, is trying to figure out ways to find other people in the community that maybe feel like they've topped out in what they can do in their career or maybe are looking for something more in life, and identifying those people and really trying to get them invested in working in Breckenridge.
That's awesome. You're the perfect guy to do that.
I, I try, right? And I can use my life experience from doing that. So we're working that way.
Great.
Or anything that maybe didn't pop on the reports that you see as budding issues that we should be aware of? Is there any, any facets that maybe graphs don't illustrate, but that you guys have been focusing on or concerned about?
No, I don't know that there's any real, like, anything that's popping that's a concern. You know, it's kind of like with the event planning, you know, as those incidents that happen at public events increase, I devote more and more of my time coordinating with Public Works and Red, White and Blue, figuring out, all right, here's how we're gonna secure the street. Because, you know, Fourth of July parade, for example, how many years in a row have we done the same sort of setup for that? And so initially it was like, oh, we'll just do the same thing we've always done. Well, now we're really looking at, how can we provide better, more secure footprints? I don't know if you guys saw the steel barricades out at Snow Sculptures. You know, previously we'd put up what, like the wooden sawhorses and thought that was good enough, right? You know, but this year, right after New Orleans happened, I was like, we really gotta secure the pedestrian area as best we can. So we met with BTO, Public Works, Red, White and Blue. We did a site visit. Me and Scott Jackman, you know, coordinated where we're actually gonna place everything. And then the Public Works credit, they got it all done at the time we said we wanted to get it done. So just going forward, things like that is what we're keeping on our radar and whatever the national kind of hot topics are, trying to keep those, you know, in the front of our minds.
I guess well below the critical importance of what you were just talking about. One of the things that had been mentioned up here quite a few times is vandalism.
Sure.
Is there any, any safeguards that, you know, we can take to help keep our town looking clean and?
Yeah. And that's just like one of those ongoing topics. We actually did a leadership challenge program topic on this this past summer. I was the mentor for that group. We looked at all sorts of different ways to identify it. But I think the thing we landed on that could be the most beneficial is public art installations in those areas that kind of get tagged more frequently, like the bike underpasses, things of that nature. Certain things, you know, if it's in public, it's like, well, if we have signage. And then it was like, well, they'll probably just tag the sign that says no graffiti, right? You know, just to kind of send a message. Security cameras are great, but, you know, a lot of the times, you guys, I'm sure have all seen the, the photos of it's like, help identify this, you know, suspect. And it's this dark shadowy figure. And it's like, that could be a million different people, right? So things like that are, you know, effective in terms of cost, but not really effective in terms of prosecution. So, you know, I think as we have more staffing, as we have staffing with more experience and as we are more aware of those things, like, once it starts warming up and kids get out of school, all right, maybe we do some more directed enforcements in these low-visibility areas, just to have a police presence. And maybe that kind of dissuades people from doing it. But with some of the more public art installations that have gone in, in those areas like the bike underpass near the hospital, you know, we'll see if anything like that gets tagged and if there's any sort of potential for that being an effective solution for us to beautify the town while also mitigating the possibility of graffiti and vandalism.
It's a great idea. All right. Well, thank you so much. This was a terrific report and we appreciate your time.
All right. Thank you, guys.
Okay, we're moving on to short-term rental annual report. Bella and Pam are coming down. I'm on notice. I'm on notice.
Good afternoon, Maryland's Town Council. So what's attached to the agenda here is our annual report that it's required and it's written into our town code. We present it every year by February 1st. It shows the license movements and our compliance program through 2024. So any questions that I can answer?
Thanks so much for all this information. Questions for Bella?
I'd like to thank you too. You've been the, the, the guardian of the data on this subject since we started talking about it. It's really helpful.
Okay. Wonderful. That's wonderful to hear.
You're, you're the true expert. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good afternoon.
Gonna take a quick break. Five minutes, not a second more. Okay, we are moving on to our zero emission priority procurement policy. James?
All right. Thanks, everyone. Good afternoon, Mayor and Town Council. We're here to just kind of go over our new implemented, well, I should back that up. It's not a new implemented plan because we've actually been, we've had a practice within Public Works for a number of years now. By evidence of the, some of the numbers of the EV vehicles that we have in the fleet currently. But we did want to, this year, make it official and have an official policy. And there's some background in there that's kind of led to this document. But more importantly, I wanted to take the opportunity to just say that, while we've been doing work internally in the town of Breckenridge, and we should certainly be proud of doing the work, we're also working inside the framework of the Summit Community Climate Action Plan and the Summit EV Plan and our own Breck Sustainability Plan. So there's, that's a lot right there, but there are three plans that all kind of dovetail together and all kind of work for this in the same direction for ultimately reducing greenhouse gases. And so there's some greenhouse gas. And there's some numbers provided in the background of this, this piece that kind of show what we're working to attain. I think it is an important distinction to, to state that while the town is doing certainly what we're able to do within the transportation sector, the larger plan really is, applies to Summit County as a whole. And Teddy is really the, the individual behind the curtain that really tumbles all the numbers and looks at all the data, and he really knows all the specifics of how we're doing, the town is doing, not only as an organization, but also the town, the community Summit County is doing. So with that, hopefully you found the memo to be helpful and also the policy hopefully was, had some self-explanatories as well, and what we do when we look at new vehicles for purchase. Just another side note, all the vehicles that the town does purchase goes through Public Works, not only for the initial procurement, but also right through to all the actual maintenance, which you've probably heard us talk about on several occasions in the past. So that'll just open it up for any questions. And again, if there's any real interest in kind of diving into some of the data, how we're doing as a whole in the town or the community and for Summit County that is, Teddy can certainly add to that.
Thanks, James. Questions?
I'm sorry to off. James, is, there's operational exemptions.
I can start it off, um, James, is, there's operational exemptions based on like runtime, or power needed, or whatever wi- within this policy, is that correct?
Yeah, there are, and they're, they're probably not so specific to, well, I guess, there are some nuances, and so the, the main ones that are probably, make the most sense are the heavy equipment, like, this policy really applies to the light duty equipment, the stuff we're most familiar with, you know, the SUVs and the, and the cars and the trucks and stuff that we're able to really, that there's already EV opportunities exist. Uh, but the, the ones that really come to mind that, that, you know, the technology just isn't quite there yet, and is like the loaders, the heavier duty, uh, snowplow trucks, um, motor graders, you know, equipment like that. You know, I think there is some R and D going on in that world, but there's just not enough, you know, critical mass at this, at this time, that the, you know, a lot of the manufacturers are putting a lot of time into that. There are street sweepers that we've actually had, um, had an opportunity to bring here in Breckenridge and take a look at, for instance. So maybe to the operational piece, we found that it was allowed to operate for three hours at a time before we had to charge it again.
That doesn't do the trick, does it?
Yeah, yeah, that was, you know, yeah.
We put more sand down than.
Yeah, so, I guess that's some of the, some of the exemption really applies to that heavy, heavier duty equipment. The other area that we're still exploring and, and, um, is some of the operations like for the police services, and we just had a nice, um, presentation by the police, but the nature of their business being twenty, twenty-four seven and needing to roll it all times of the day, right now, we're still looking and discussing opportunities that, that makes sense in, in the police world.
That's great, and it sounds like common sense kind of takes precedent over trying to hit a ratio number or something that's not, maybe not prudent at this point of time.
That's correct.
Um, what, what are the metrics that we're using to compare against other communities or to see how we're doing?
You know, for that little graph that we put in your chart, we really just took our climate action plan, and we said, what do we need to do to, um, be kind of doing our part to achieve these goals related to our fleet, and so that's, that's kind of how we developed that. You know, there's, there's definitely like when we were developing this community, we, we got a bunch of example policies from other ones, so there's lots of other municipalities all across the country that are further than us, some are behind us, um, but, you know, we are, I think this is, gets us on track to where we want to be in alignment with our sustainable Breck Plan Goals and Climate Action Plan Goals.
Right, and do we use like, trying to think how to ask this, but as far as, um, looking at a pragmatic approach to reducing greenhouse gas emissions, is it just how many vehi- how many EV vehicles are, are of the town are on the street? Or do we look at like how many gallons of fuel we're using versus how many kilowatts of energy and like, and shifting that, that ratio to not only look at it from a number of EV vehicles, but also looking at it on like policy of how much idling is being done, or how many round trips are being done when unnecessary, or, you know, kind of looking at it both ways?
Yeah, when, um, when we're deciding which ones to replace, we are trying to target, uh, the higher mileage vehicles that we are seeing, um, and, uh, because we get the most bang for our buck when, um, in terms of greenhouse gas emission reduction and fuel use reduction, the vehicles with the highest vehicle miles traveled are, are doing that. And, I forget what the second part of your question was there, but does that kind of, I mean, that's kind of the main lens of how we're, we're trying to prioritize, the other part is just the replacement schedule. You know, if we have a perfectly good vehicle that isn't due for replacement, we don't really, we want to continue using it for as long as we need to, um, and we're trying to align these up with the, their regular replacement cycles as well, that's also, um, to work within our budgets, um, as well, so we're not, you know, spending a bunch of money, um, additional, um, on vehicle replacements that we don't necessarily need to do.
Do we track the number of gallons we, of diesel we use per year or per month?
Yeah, we do, we do, and I can tell you, um, just off of the, the eight EVs we have in the fleet, I think it saved us, just last year alone, um, two thousand gallons of, of about two thousand gallons of gasoline, um, avoided from being used at our, our town fuel pumps.
And so that's a decrease from the previous year?
Correct.
Very cool, thank you.
Yep.
Is it technology, or, were you gonna, are you sure?
Yeah.
Is the technology there now for the hand tools like the weed eaters and lawnmowers and all that stuff?
Yeah, I'm glad you brought that up, because this does actually, outside of just vehicles, it does apply to, um, equipment and power tools, so our Parks Department has already purchased a lot of electric string trimmers, leaf blowers.
So that technology is.
Snow blowers, so that.
Life out of the batteries to make it worthwhile?
Yeah, absolutely, and, uh, the staff seems to love it, it's, you know.
They're a lot easier than you.
A lot easier to use, less maintenance, less stinky, quieter, so, um, it's a, it's a win for everyone.
That's great, sorry, Steve.
That's okay, you got my question, one of my two questions. The second question I have, and either one of you may have an answer for this, is there anything else out there that communities are doing that we're missing? That you would say, hey, you know, here's a piece that we haven't started yet?
You know, uh, as, this is mostly focused on, on kind of our light duty vehicle fleet and passenger vehicles with, with transit, um, you know, there's, there's en route charging for electric buses that, um, would be something that we definitely want to look at. Currently though, I think that, um, we're able to cover most of the, the charging with just what's called depot charging by charging it back at the bus barn, but that's an example of something that we are seeing other, other communities look at, at doing more of.
Great, thanks.
Oh, I'm sorry, can I have one more follow-up? I'm just, I was just curious with, you know, when the, when an emergency happens, a fire, a snowstorm that, you know, cuts down electricity, you know, you can o- more or less always get a, a truck with, a diesel truck up here with gas. What is, especially when you, what triggered this was when you were talking about working with the police department. What happens if we do have a long-term electrical outage and our emergency vehicles are electric?
That's, that's a great question, um, one of the things that we've been discussing internally, and, um, the chief and I have had this discussion as well, is he's, he's, you know, based on that scenario, you know, in an emergency situation, for instance, if we did have an event where we had to have an evacuation from the community, we'd want to be able to, to roll our buses. And so we've already kind of thought about, there's, there is going to be a number or threshold of which that will have X amount of electric buses, and some that are still either hybrid or, um, possibly even diesel still. And the same is true, that, that actually, you know, kind of tears down into some of our other public works, um, like, you know, activities for the same reasons that we will need to be able to have trucks available for some of those, that very scenario, so. What I can say is we don't, we've been looking at what that, where the sweet spot is, or what the right number should be, but we haven't, we feel like we're, you know, we're not approaching that quickly at this point, so we still have a, a little bit of time to develop that number, but again, that is a, that is a great, um, question, because we are keeping an eye on that for sure.
And when I seventy was closed, Silverthorne actually ran out of gas, so that's not a unlimited resource, thank you, Mr. Anti.
One long-term solution that we could look at, or, you know, keep, keep exploring more is, um, micro grids and battery storage. So, you know, you could develop a micro grid that encompasses Public Works and police station and have some kind of battery storage element that could help with, um, those situations of power outages. And then just to mention that the, the police station does have a backup generator currently, so, um, if the power were to go out, you know, that backup generator, I need to make sure that it's, beats the charger that's over there now, but, um, you know, theoretically, they could continue getting charging, um, off of the backup generator for a short amount of time.
Terrific, all right, well, thank you guys very much for moving us forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna move on to Planning Matters, Cucumber Creek Estates Extended Vesting Request. Chris, come on down.
Bring, uh, Tim down as well?
And, yes, Mr. Casey, welcome. It's very formal down here, very formal.
All right, well, good evening, Mayor and Council, um, Chris Kulik, Planning Manager for the record, and I have Tim Casey here, who has submitted a extended vesting request, um, and just really wanted to come and talk to you guys. He's kind of amazingly reaching near the end of his, uh, previous ten years of extended vesting of a project that's really gone on, um, for almost thirty years now, and it's, it's, you know, kind of slowly, um, been developed, but along the way, we wanted to kind of show like the three from day one, and some of the other benefits we've gained, um, you know, through really a partnership with, uh, Tim and his, his business partners. Uh, apologize, it's a little confusing, because we have a lot of, uh, tracks that have similar names in, uh, adjacent subdivisions, we tried to minimize that. But really, I'm here to answer questions of kind of the history and, you know, maybe what the, the benefits are, but I also probably will turn it over to Tim, because I think he, um, unless there's any questions off the bat, I think he may have a, a pitch for you, or can answer questions.
Yeah, maybe Tim can give us some history, um, are there any questions for Chris before we get a little bit of history, and go ahead?
Thank you, um, we actually purchased this property about thirty-nine or forty years ago, I thought we would be, I've done with it a long time ago. And this latest iteration is basically, it was a ten-year vesting, and now we're looking at the ten years is up in, um, January. So from our standpoint, you probably don't get many requests to delay development, but in this particular, uh, case, that's what we're attempting to do. We're really, we're, we can plat the lots, we can survey it, we can do all that, and we would need to do that in January. But we have an agreement with the town that's a lease agreement, that basically says, as long as we have ownership and it renewals annually, unless it's terminated by either party, that the community and the Nordic Center can use it for access, and so we're down to three acres, and we've got, uh, effectively, our vesting allows us for six lots. And we've decided that it would be, uh, in our best interest and the communities or the Nordic Center to just ask for an extension for three years, so that it can be, that use can be continued to be implemented over time, and, uh, hopefully, um, you know, within three years, we can say, okay, uh, it's time, and we'll plat the lots and, and, and start selling them. So from our standpoint, it's been, it's been a long run, it's been a great partnership with the community, obviously, from the Nordic Center to Cucumber Creek, to many, many other iterations, it was, it was kind of a walk down memory lane, I had to go through all the documents, and it, it really started out as, um, a, a foundation, we were going to set aside a couple acres for the Christie Heights Art Foundation, and what precipitated that is the Bergenau, the, uh, in our, uh, the Breckenridge Music Institute was losing the Bergenau, so we said, they have no place to go, let's create two acres up there. And then fortunately, you know, the Riverwalk Center came about, and then the Nordic Center came about, and then we, uh, deeded the property to the town, and, and i- it all, it all worked, it was a, it was a long haul, but it was a effort that I, we enjoyed, and, and I think the end result speaks for itself, so.
You forgot the tent in the dirt parking lot.
Yeah, the dirt parking lot, remember when the tent used to blow, that we were afraid it was all gonna blow away in the dirt parking lot? Before the town, yeah, the town bought the property, thank heavens, so, anyway. Uh, that's where we're at, we'd like to have a little bit more time so that we don't have to develop it, and, um, you know, the community can use it, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. All right, questions for Mr. Casey or Mr. Kulik? Is that enough time, Tim?
Well, I, it, it's funny, because Jeffrey said, when we did this first time around, he said, why don't you ask for fifteen years, and I said, nah, no, we don't need fifteen years. And so it was one of those things where we should have asked for fifteen years, and then I wouldn't have had to waste your time. You know, we, we want to be reasonable, and at some point, you know, considering, um, how long we've all, our partners all older, and, um, including myself, and at some point, we just need to be able to move on, but, you know, if the town wants to consider five years, you bet, we'll take it. But it's purely, you know, we, it's purely at the town's discretion and, uh, wha- whatever they think is appropriate, and if it's beneficial to, to, uh, the community.
Tim, uh, I think you said that you've been in town for fifty years as of this year, and wanted to say thank you for all your contributions and all of your generous support of the town, and over those years, uh, I think it's important to realize that, um, and correct me if I'm wrong, that you're not asking for this extension because you can't get your rights accomplished before January, you could do it pretty much tomorrow if you wanted to, and that this is really to, uh, delay the development, um, which is great, and to allow the Nordic Center use on that. Uh, one thing I was curious if you would be interested in or be willing to do is, uh, the first right of an offer. Um, meaning that at the time that you are ready to plot it, that you provide the town with an option, with the opportunity to, uh, to purchase if it was ever so, uh, had the ability to, before, uh, offering to sell to other developers.
You know, Jay, I think that's, that's a great idea, uh, from our standpoint, a, a first right of offer is entirely appropriate, because if the town, and it would be purely at the town's discretion, of course, if you wanted to buy one or more lots, we could say, okay, you, you want to have additional access, uh, our, our partnership would be more than willing and happy to do that, as a, a means to say, we're ready to go, we're thinking of selling it, and here, if you guys, um, want the first opportunity to buy it, um, obviously, it's going to be driven by market values and the open space fund and the, and, and the, uh, you know, how the town feels is about spending money on private property, um, at, at that particular point in time, but, uh, you know, we did the first deal, uh, the Cucumber Creek deal, and we, at, at the time, we said, you know, it's twenty-three acres, it's twenty-three lots, and if we don't do that, then the, the gulch, we were going to develop into the gulch, obviously, so, we said, I went back to my partners, who are all from California, and haven't been here in twenty-five years, and I said, we, we really need to do this so that we can have that opportunity to develop the gulch and, and the Cucumber Creek Preserve, so, uh, I, I, I think that's, uh, something that we, I know that it's something that we would be happy to commit to. The devil's in the details as far as the language, but outside of that.
That's above my pay grade. Thank you, Tim, I appreciate that, Justin.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions? Well, I think Jay said it really well, that you've been a terrific partner in this community, and Mr. Dayton is in the back, and he's another amazing partner, we're really lucky to have you guys, and, um, definitely a public benefit to not see this developed right away, and, um, and I do think that, um, the first right would be a terrific thing for a future council to consider, so thank you for being willing for that. Did you have something to say?
Well, just leaning in excitedly.
All right, Steve?
I think we should do five years, and just get it off the table. I mean, it's going to develop when it's going to develop, the right of first refusal is a great opportunity potentially for the town.
Uh, right of first refusal and right of first offer are very, are, are not very different, but they are some, uh, semantics, yeah.
Are people interested in the five years? Okay, well, we've got more than you came here.
Well, thank you, and, you know, having, having been here fifty years and seeing the evolution of the town, it is a privilege to be part of this community, and, you know, it, we, we've all made it a better place for everyone, so, uh, thanks to your leadership and past councils, uh, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Great.
So I'll, I'll continue to work with Tim, and I guess we'll expect probably a development. So I'll, I'll continue to work with Tim and I guess we'll expect probably a development agreement for first reading later in the spring. I think because of the timing, it is an emergency because Tim thought ahead and came a year in advance to when he needed it. Well, we'll start working on it and probably come back in March or April.
Great. Sounds wonderful.
Sounds great. Thank you. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Vince.
Okay, we're gonna move on to the Neighborhood Preservation Public Outreach Plan.
Guess I'll lead off here. Julie and I and then Brooke and Helen and Flor met after our last work session to kind of go over next steps for our communication plan. And we have a, they prepare the memo, I should say, to outline those plans. Right now, I'm working on kind of the first phase to get a couple of different groups of architects as well as builders in the community, kind of that do just little groups just to kind of talk through some of the ideas that came out of the last work session. Expect to meet with them really when I get back from vacation here in a, in a couple of weeks. And then from that, we will likely go to a work session with the Planning Commission with some actual code changes proposed and get their feedback. And that will likely be at the beginning of April. And then from there, I think, you know, I think, you know, looking at what, what, you know, the suggestions were, I, I think it strikes that balance where it's not going to be terribly objectionable within the community. That's something I think we can move rather quickly, but we obviously want to get ahead and work with the people that, you know, most often work in our code and get, get buy-in before we actually take the next step and present drafted code amendments to the Planning Commission.
Yeah, and the only thing that I will really add is that this campaign overview that we kind of came up with is very early on. You know, it has the potential to be built out a little bit, but we're really just looking for the feedback from the target audience before we actually start telling them what we're doing.
That's great. All right. Questions or comments on this plan?
I have comments. I mean, I think this is the way to do it. Reach out to the architects. They're the ones who are going to be driving the development.
Yeah, I agree with that and I'm hopeful that it's not too heavy of a lift for staff and that it seems like, you know, the, some of the issues that came up in the neighborhood preservation policy or, you know, the, the meat of them are going to be addressed in the energy code and sustainability side of things. So, yeah, hopefully we get some great input and it's not, not too much of a burden on staff to host some of these and get some good feedback.
Yeah, and I, I think I'll add too that, you know, even though there's 14 different neighborhoods that this is affecting, it, it's a lot different than, you know, the lighting policy where really the whole town has this data they have to hit where the majority has to retrofit. This is having a, a much more specific portion of the town that's affected to begin with. And then it's also, you're only affected if you're making changes or you're doing major renovations. So to the vast majority of those residents, there's to be very little impact. You know, at this point, it's to be kind of over time.
I think one thing that would be really good is having a map. I know there's a target audience and you probably know if you live in some BIM estates, you probably know that. But some people don't and just for buying and selling, I think having a map that's pretty accessible as far as who this preservation policy would affect and just all, all of us starting from one would be really helpful.
Yeah, I think in designing it, we had, you know, Brad Loverchel has helped us out and does, has done some terrific maps. And I think we can even fine tune that a little bit more and have that obviously front and center for the, any kind of outreach campaign.
That'd be great. Yeah, I think, I agree. I think this is a terrific start. I would just add that if you think someone from council should be present in these, you know, we could either take turns or people can sign up. Just let us know about timing and happy to kind of provide that additional layer of support. And then also just to listen in as well.
Okay, no, that's great.
Any guests or targets for the timeline of each step? Are we not that far yet?
I think it's to be based on the feedback. But I also would say that a lot of the things that I think the direction we got is not out of line with other code amendments we do that we're able to, you know, carry out fairly quickly. So I think really kind of that month period to work with the groups, then take it to Planning Commission. And then really based on their, their feedback, bring it back to council for probably just a work session to get clarification that we're, this is what we want. And then go the first and second reading hopefully. Because I, I think, you know, compared to the last time around where we were talking about a range of, you know, going from unlimited density to having a ceiling and, and I, I think people didn't really understand what we're proposing or it took, it took a lot more time to create that buy-in. Now we're really kind of refining. We're kind of shrinking that envelope, so to speak, but not with square footage. You can still be creative and, and get your, your maximum square footage, but it's more in the, you know, just in terms of how you design your roof, you know, bringing in those setbacks a little bit. So just from the initial, you know, outreach that we've done with some select homeowners, it doesn't seem like there's been a a big concern with where we're going.
We've heard a little bit of feedback though, so certainly those folks that have reached out with us, let's make sure we keep them in the loop.
Yeah, we definitely will. And I, I think, you know, the email that you're probably specifically, I, I think there's, there's probably a general fear that really it's the, really get clamped down.
Yeah, I think you're exactly right. The general fear is the concern.
And, and I think that's what we wanted to address, you know, straight away through the outreach.
Yep, great. Okay, anything else? Well done. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna move to small business assistance. Julia.
Thank you. You're Mayor and Town Council. Yeah, I'm here to talk to you about small business assistance. And you know, generally when we came before you over numerous council work sessions for employee generation, we talked about some other concerns that the council or heard some other concerns that the council had, such as like creating a positive business environment here in town and, or maintaining that. And looking at our existing businesses that maybe want to expand and what those issues could be or, or prevent people from coming, new businesses coming into town that maybe have additional fees and other limitations that they are running up against. And so we really wanted to see like, is, is it just our fees? Or do we want to take a broader look at the economic kind of conditions that we have here for those small business owners? Knowing that our Main Street area, our commercial core really is sort of the heart of our town. I like to think of it sort of as the heartbeat, right? And everything sort of goes off of that. So to really keep that community character and vibrancy, which we see showing up over and over again in our town vision plan and things like that, we wanted to take that step back. So in this memo, we've outlined some goals and methods to kind of maybe look at here potentially. And we broke it out into existing businesses as a focus and then new and or expanding businesses that already exist in town. The issues are slightly in some cases. So I'm not going to go over every single point in here and happy to talk about any of these further. But generally, the, you know, the goals are to provide a strong business environment for those to thrive, have that welcoming piece to it. Know what is missing in our existing business community that maybe the town can help with assisting those small businesses with. Also promoting our educational, existing educational opportunities, see if there's any additional ones that are out there. And promoting those to all the types of businesses, whether they're new, existing or expanding. So one of the key, some of the key highlights that we thought would be to do a survey of the businesses, find out what is missing. What are you having hardships over? What are the issues, concerns and so on, to really hear from them? Because we don't want to assume that we know what they're going through. So and analyze that and kind of make a plan based on that. So that's one idea. And we also have potential list of, you know, grant and loan ideas that are attached to this memo too that I'm happy to discuss if you have any questions. And those really obviously would need a fine line of regulations as far as like who it applies to. You know, what, what kind of things are we hitting? Are you hitting a town vision, things like that? To kind of qualify for things like a grant or a loan type of program. And then there's a lot of opportunities out there and, and the BTO's DMMO Download does a great job of putting some of those opportunities out. But we could have that also on a website that I'll talk about here in a second. And then there's just some other ideas in here, but really reaching out to our broad community from, you know, those that are, are, who are our targets. It could be Summit High School students that are just graduating. It could be CMC students that want to open a business, our Spanish-speaking community or underrepresented community. And then just our existing businesses obviously need our support as well. And so do new ones. So just kind of providing that environment and that information to those folks. And then going into, more specifically into expanding, existing expanding businesses and new small businesses. Again, a lot of the goals are similar. But we're getting into the, you know, fee reductions or is the, like for the parking district? Or is there, you know, the water plant investment fees? Could we still like charge them in a more like payment plan type of operation versus all at once? So it is a large cost to open up, for example, a restaurant to start. Another idea was one that we can implement right away, which I'm terming the one-stop-shop business page. And really, we, we don't have a page that kind of provides everything for new businesses to existing businesses, sort of like from concept to CO, right? Or, and then beyond, if you're in existing businesses, to operations. So that would sort of be the concept behind that plan and we could execute that sooner than later. And I have met with the communications team on, on that setup. We think that's possible really quickly. Again, we threw out some things like business incubator programs and a potential partnership with the Chamber, BTO. So there's that potential too. We have met with both the BTO and the Chamber and had some preliminary discussions of just, you know, what do you think of these ideas? You know, what, what would something look like in the future if we wanted to? Do you have the capacity to do something like that? So happy to answer any questions on that. I think if we got direction on some bigger programs, then we would obviously be returning to you with the details on all that. So with that, again, the public outreach, I kind of mentioned the, the target audiences that we would go toward and in our business survey. And then really the, I'm just here before you to kind of get your thoughts and ideas, any support or on any of these programs to look into further, if there's any interest in that. And then we would again return with more detail. So I'll leave it there and then you know if you have questions.
Good. Questions for Julia?
Thanks for all this and laying it out so well. I'm really interested in the future discussions we'll have about PIF and parking fees. I think those will be really impactful. And then just collecting information about everything that is available for businesses, I think will be an invaluable resource. As we're going down this, I know we really do want to focus on supporting the small businesses. So as we potentially explore a grant, which I don't know if that's the direction I'd want to go, but as we're vetting it, I'd like to understand how targeted we can be and who can qualify to really promote those small locals businesses. Otherwise, I know as a government entity, we do have that somewhat fine line not to promote one business over another. So I'd also just want to understand those parameters that we're working in.
Yeah, and we could, I mean, these programs that are in the packet are, some of them are fairly common across municipalities in Colorado. Some were, would maybe be a little more Breckenridge specific, but I think you could, if you wanted to proceed with a program like that, you could really kind of rein in like, does it meet a council goal or something in the Destination Management Plan? That's, and, and you would have like some qualifiers. And it could be, I mean, you could put anything you want in there, right? Like if we're, if we're really targeting existing businesses, then that's what we would be putting in as a qualifier. Businesses under a certain employee size or something like that could also be in there. And then, of course, we'd have to talk like financial pieces and all that stuff. So there's a lot more conversation if we wanted to go that way. But just as a starter of ideas.
Yeah, I love it. I want to just say thank you for the hard work and really thoughtful kind of assessment and breaking down. And realize how many layers and details were, you know, already in place. But, you know, I think as a town, a lot of the efforts we do are more restrictive. And I think this is more of an uplifting and, and helping, yeah, kind of what makes Breck amazing and vibrant is, is our small businesses. And I really like that we're spending the energy on that. I'm hopeful that we're able to, to look at employee generation as maybe one of those fees that there's a, a layer in there that we can help those small businesses that, that maybe can't swing $250,000 or a thousand foot, thousand square foot, you know, change in use. So anyways, great start. Excited that we're looking at this really positive uplifting and I think brand building bit of work. So thank you.
I would second Carolyn Todd's comments and I don't think you're in here when this conversation was had, but your second bullet point under goals for existing businesses, increased communication. You know, we, we just got in the weeds on our Fourth of July discussion because we're trying to think, what do the businesses want from us for the Fourth of July? And if we can ramp up the ability for them to tell us and to provide us data because we're trying to make a data-based decision without any data. And we're guessing about too many things where we're spending big chunks of town money, but not knowing whether we're addressing a supportive environment for the businesses or not. So as you move forward, I'd really like to see ongoing discussions back and forth so that this is not just what can we do for you business owners, but what can you do for us if you really want our help? So I think it's a great start. I think you, I think you, you really opened up all the things that we want to think about with this. And, you know, one of the things about Breckenridge is that we aren't a big, long street of box, big box stores. We are small businesses and that's important.
I agree with the comments made and piggyback on Steve's a little. That's the character of my town is that independent, mom and pop type business. So I would encourage you, when the time is right, to engage. We've gotten some engagement from some retail folks, you know, through letters and such. Engage them and help put together some of these programs. You know, and try to get it, get ahead of it with input from some of the business community.
Do you guys have anything?
Um, yeah, I think my comments may not be shared by everyone who's raised the case. I, I really, I, I would, I would encourage you to, to proceed with those non-direct financial line items as that is the low hanging fruit. Is that if we can bring down some of the barriers to entry of the confusion or the intimidation of the process and kind of provide a step-by-step guide to doing business in Breckenridge. I think that provides a lot of transparency and clarity into what owning and operating a business in the town is encompasses, focusing mostly on new versus existing small businesses. And, and really, the qualifiers, I think, is where, I think we've all kind of thought about of, you know, how do you direct any, any efforts to, to the, what we're looking for? And I think, you know, we heard it from the, the police department, from sergeant, that if we can target local, like Summit School District or CMC, if there's a way to provide the, the resources directly to those that are coming out of our community into small business, I think that would be extremely successful and may be able to be articulated and created in a way that is in the form of, of grants, of financial grants, but is directed from kind of more of our homegrown community that is either, you know, born and raised or gone to school or secondary education here. And really supporting those that have invested in the community with time and looking in those directions.
I don't think I have anything new.
I just wanted to piggyback on the kind of, well, I guess it's the explore partnership options. And I just, I don't know if this has any path forward, but I'd love for us to reach out to the school district and see, you know, if, if there's anything to be gained from that partnership. I know they've sort of reached out in a variety of different ways with their CTE. But I don't know, like maybe, you know, if they're doing a class on business and have a handful of kids who need jobs, then maybe that would be helpful in some way. I don't know. But I'd love to just open that discussion. And then curious, if you're going to develop the survey or if we're going to hire someone? I'm just, I think that if we want to get the right, like helpful information to assist in creating these programs, it's probably going to take some pretty skilled question building in order to get that. So I don't, just planting the seed that if you need help building that survey, it might be a good thing to look at bringing someone in to help with. I don't know.
Yeah, thank you. We did have a discussion with the Chamber on that. And so I think we would just discuss that further. That was something that they could handle doing or if we would want to bring in an outside party that does surveys to get those answers and be able to cross connect those.
Yeah, it might be worth just letting the Chamber or working with the to do it. And then if that doesn't work out, taking the next step at that time.
That's all, but I thought you, the depth of information and potential options is fantastic. And I do agree with Jay that love to see some of the less big financial commitments purely based on our budgeting right now is challenging. So of course we should commit funds if we need to, but obviously it's great to explore those.
If I may, just, it sounds like we'll go forward with the one stop shop website, the code discussions on parking, PIFs and, and that sounds like that's an easy go. And then was there, and maybe we'll look at doing the business survey, which will probably have some cost, if we went with a third party, it'll have some costs associated with that. If we went that direction. Sound like still something we would want to though, to do is outreach to the businesses and find out what's missing first.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
Thank you very much. It looks like we're a little ahead of schedule. Would you, Shannon, like us to do like report of town manager and staff before we go into executive session at 5:30?
That or your committee updates, whatever you think is best.
I think the legislative stuff might be interesting for everybody. So maybe we'll start with that and.
Okay. So we had an internal legislative committee meeting today. And there's several things that we're looking at. But there were three bills in particular that we wanted to talk to council about this afternoon to see if you are willing, open, supportive of us reaching out to the bill sponsors to provide feedback. The first one that I want to talk about is it's a modular housing bill or a modular facility bill. And basically what it would do, the bill is written a little confusing, so it needs to be clarified. But it would adopt, it would have the state housing board adopt rules for basically modular structures, so the boxes. And as we understood it from a previous meeting with one of the key people from fading west is that they are having trouble kind of making the model work because everybody needs a box that's different. And so in order to, to have some kind of savings and for them to mass produce boxes, they need to be producing the same kind of boxes. So what they talked about was, you know, maybe six to eight different interior boxes that are designed for certain different climates. And then they could push those boxes out. So essentially that's what this bill is doing is it's taking the local authority out of that process. It's tells the state housing board to adopt rules that would cover, you know, the complete construction, the installation of factory built boxes for non-residential, residential, and tiny homes. The state plumbing, electrical, and fire suppression administration would not have any jurisdiction over those boxes. They would be inspected at the factory by potentially third-party inspectors. Or like if we wanted to have our local inspectors certified by the state, we could do that. And then they could inspect them. And so this isn't anything that's happening right, right away. But on or before July 1st of 2026, they'd have to, have to create an advisory committee that would develop regulations that the board would then have to approve. And basically, the board, well, so in addition, providing the rules to the state board for their approval. They were, they're also required to do a study about whether or not the international building code or residential codes would apply to site requirements that, you know, so where the boxes are going to be placed, which obviously doesn't have anything to do with the interior of the box. And whether or not the state should regulate non-factory components connected with the installation. So there's a, there's a lot of this that we don't want to lose control of. You know, they did, in our meeting with the fellow from fading west, they did talk a lot about, you know, this regional concept where you'd have, you'd make sure the snow and wind loads were appropriate and whatnot. But it really takes the town out of the picture. And we don't know what the timing on this will be, but it is important to note that we have two employee housing developments in the planning process that are going to be boxes. So we would like to send a letter to the representatives who are pushing this bill forward, letting them know our position on it.
Who are the sponsors, Shannon?
I have to look. I don't have that right in front of me.
That's okay.
Yeah, it wasn't Dylan.
No, that one wasn't Dylan. Yeah, I'm not sure. I don't want to speak out of turn. I think, so I guess it's also important to note it's made it out of committee and it's going to the Senate for their second vote. This is a bill that the governor is in favor of.
That he's what?
In favor of.
Oh, of course.
I am, you know, it may have come out of his office, so. Is there anything else you would like to, name Kelly, Carol, Keely, that you would like to add?
No, I think you summed it up well. In our committee, we thought this was something worth weighing in because it had to have an impact on our community, our planning code and the quality of life where our.
I think it has the ability to perhaps lower the standards that we would require as a community. And I think we should oppose it.
Well, we'll work on that. And just so you know, CCAT and CCI are in an amend position. CAS didn't take a position. And I think CML was opposed. I thought so, yeah.
Yeah, I would encourage us to reach out to Dylan and Julie as well.
Yep. Okay. Thank you.
Point out there's some life safety issues between fire and snow loads.
Okay, there's a lot in there that's kind of messy. The next one, this should be pretty quick. I think we've talked about this before. This is the wireless telecom bill. Dylan Roberts is a sponsor on this bill. It's, they're, they're calling it the shot clock bill. Julia, I think testified on it today. This is the second time she's testified on this bill. But as it's written right now, it gives us 60 days to approve a telecom application. They've said that the dates are going to, or excuse me, the shot clock is going to be lengthened. So it'd be 90 days for a smaller application and 120 days for a larger application. But the real kicker to it is that it's not the day, the shot clock doesn't start the day they submit their application. It's, it can start from a pre-application conversation, right? It, it's not the date of the application. So as Julia pointed out in some highlights, they could submit their application on day 89. And that's, you have a day to turn it around. Historic district locations are also problematic because it takes more time for planning staff to evaluate those. So there's, pretty much everyone is opposed to this. I think I may have asked Dylan when he was here with Julie about this one and he just, he didn't really answer. One of the things that we have also heard through CCUA, it's like the Colorado Communications and Utilities Association that we're a part of, is that there hasn't been any data provided on why this is necessary. You know, no examples of where permits have been held up. You know, it's just really being pushed by the telecom industry. So, and I think on this one, like I said, I think everyone is opposed. So we would like to reach out to Dylan specifically on this one and get some, get our feedback to him formally. Anything to add? Julie, anything on that one?
No, I think you, I think you got that one. I do think it's one of those situations where if there's no reason for it, if there is a reason for it, I think we'd like to hear it so that we can, you know, properly address it and, and get at that and give our perspective as, as the entity that's responsible for processing these types of applications, but without knowing sort of the reason for it and why and what the, you know, has there been an issue? We can't address that. And then all it does is just constrain us further in our review of these applications.
Is everybody okay with that one? The last one is really easy. This is also a Senate bill that would allow the state to permit third-party folks who want to be in specified locations, I think on the highway, but somewhere where people would chain up or put traction devices on. And they, they'd get permitted by the state and then they could charge a fee to put chains or traction devices on people's cars. While I wouldn't want to do that, there, I think is probably a market for that. And the, as you all know, there is a huge problem with people not having chains and whatnot. And so this would be, I hope I have this right. Not a different bill. Anyway, we want to help support this.
The petition letter that we're supporting with extra enforcement is what?
Well, it's.
Or was that another component?
I don't know. Now I think I may have it messed up. Keely, do I have this right?
I think we're just supporting outreach from the town of Vail with respect to this issue, not directly to the legislators, right?
Yeah, the letter was supposed to go to the governor, Noguchi, C.D., Lupins, Mafuski, like just the whole mess of them. And really, I don't want to misspeak on the pieces that are included in, whether it's the bill or whatever it is. But we know that we are impacted by highway closures that happen because people don't have traction devices. So I think this is a good thing for us to back. And ICE have any coalition was looking for other entities besides Vail to reach out and support really any efforts to get people to have traction or chains on.
And just to add to that, a lot of the letter was to increase enforcement. So enforcement of traction laws, enforcement of speed limits, mandatory use of right lanes for semilikes, I believe.
And I think there may be two things here, which is why I'm confused. So there is a bill that would have people out there helping. And then I think there's the broader issue of this is a problem. Trucks aren't chaining up, cars aren't, don't have traction control devices. There aren't enough troopers out there doing enforcement. It's just, it's a wide, broad problem that doesn't have a single solution. So I think there were two pieces to that, but definitely the letter to the governor. And, you know, the motor carriers have a big voice. And so kind of helping to balance some of that. Because I think some places we've heard that they don't necessarily feel that they're the problem, that it's passenger cars that are the problem, so.
Shannon, can you correct me if I'm wrong? Is the, the fees for the chain up area is, will be used to, for extra enforcement?
No, so the, the deal with the traction, the people out there getting a permit to help put stuff on and then them charging people to do that, they would pocket the money from the people that they were helping. The state might get a little bit of money from like charging them for a permit to do it, but it wouldn't be enough to support additional enforcement. The state might get a little bit of money from like charging them for a permit to do it, but it wouldn't be enough to support additional enforcement. Oh, when we come back, I'll. Separate the two things and make sure that I give you a clear understanding of one and the other.
Yeah, but I don't think there was any discussion of a funding mechanism for the enforcement. I don't remember the letter saying anything about the, any funding, so I'm not really sure how they would fund that, but.
I guess I was just concerned that like if municipalities are able to, or I guess if any individuals. Have jurisdiction over chain up areas and charges for it, that would, wouldn't that deter? Chain ups more?
No, that.
Or am I getting this wrong?
No, there's no municipal oversight of a chain up area. It's really us just supporting the state. Giving a permit for private company to come in and put chains on vehicles. So that's the bill.
And then I think the letter, as Carol said, is more broad than that, addressing all the issues.
I think we support it.
And I will.
All right, anything else? Okay, then I'm going to keep us on schedule and go back to our regular programming. Keely, do you want to do a motion to go into executive session or would, for?
I, I will give you the citation and then you will do the motion. So if I can get a motion under twenty-four, six, four, oh, two, four, B and E. To discuss the two items that are on the agenda and update on the SEHA mediation outcome. A discussion of town enforcement, code enforcement mechanisms, and then there's a third item to discuss, which is a intervention in the. Colorado, before the Colorado Public Utilities Commission. So for all three of those, they are subject, items subject to negotiation and also to receive legal advice related to those specific items.
Bill moved. Second.
I'll do a roll call. Councilmember Gerard.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Beckerman.
Yes.
Councilmember Carlson. Councilmember Rankin.
Yes.
Councilmember Sade.
Yes.
Mary Owens.
Yes. Now you know, I feel every time I do that.
We do have to go into the lower level conference room so that Keely can join us.
Okay, great. Thanks, Keely.
Thank you, in a minute.
Our board. Can we, we need to bring Keely over, she's not already a panelist.
Yeah, if she doesn't do that, I can, I can run through that.
Great. All right, Keely, we're ready for you.
Thank you. We've concluded our executive session. We're back in regular session and council has two. Pieces to disseminate, so I think. There was direction to. Staff to continue with the Public Utilities Commission intervention and then. I think we need a, a motion and any additional discussion about the. Participation of the town in the SEHA mediation settlement.
I move that we approve the town of Breckenridge portion in the SEHA mediation settlement.
Second.
Second.
And I guess roll call, so councilmember Gerard.
Yes.
Councilmember Rankin.
Yes.
Councilmember Carlton.
Yes.
Councilmember Sade.
Yes.
Councilmember Beckerman.
Yep.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Mayor Owens.
Yes.
That was going to go in order that time.
Yeah, it's a lot easier. I learned that.
I was trying to be fancy.
Like Helen. All right, I think that's all we have. Do we want, do we have anything else?
So the only other, the only thing is I figured out why I got confused. So the. Not that it is an, it's not an acceptable excuse, but anyway, in the letter, they do reference senate bill.
Right.
Sixty-nine, I think it is, which is. The one on the chain assist and the I seventy coalition will be testifying in favor of that bill tomorrow. So I sent you the letter so that you can all see what it, it's in it, but that's what essentially we'll be doing. So that's all.
Okay, great. Anything else? Meeting adjourned.
Oh, yeah, okay. Ready? Then I'll take that one.
Seven o'clock, I'm going to call the town council regular meeting for February eleventh, twenty twenty-five to order. Roll call, please, Helen.
Marika Page. Dick Carlton.
Here.
Steve Gerard. Carol Sade.
Here.
Jay Beckerman.
President.
Todd Rankin. Mayor Kelly Owens.
Sure. All right, approval of the minutes for town, for council meeting, January twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five. Any changes? Minutes are approved. Approval of the agenda.
No changes.
Okay. Communications to council. This is a time to speak if you are here to talk to us about something that is not on the agenda. There is a three-minute time limit. Please state your name for the record.
Hi there, my name is Garen Riekel. Sorry. I'm here to comment on the short-term rental annual report presented earlier in the work session. I believe the conclusions that were presented were both incorrect and misleading. The increase in short-term rental complaints were explained by simply more proactive policing, but I don't think this tells the whole story. I also looked at the short-term rental complaint data through a core request and here are some additional things that you might find interesting. There were additional complaints made under the classifications of illegal rentals, occupancy limits, and the biggest of them all, other. None of these were included in the short-term rental annual report. And sorry, one sec. In addition, the reported number of parking violations was approximately twenty-five percent higher than what was reported. If all the complaints are actually counted, the total comes up to two hundred fifty-seven, which is approximately seventeen percent higher than the total number. That was given for two thousand and twenty-three. I, of course, encourage you to look at the data yourselves and come to your own conclusions, but I think it certainly raises a few questions. First of all, why has there been such an increase in the number of complaints despite Breckenridge having a hundred and twenty fewer short-term rental licenses this year? Second, why was the full data not provided to the city council? And third, how can we better ensure the short-term rental office is working to provide a positive experience, experience not just for tourists, but also the people who work and live here? Thank you.
Thank you very much, Garen. Our staff will. Look at, or, you know, take into account your comments and make sure that they report back to council on them. Thank you. All right, any more public comments? Public comment is closed. We have a Black History Month proclamation. Whereas Black History Month is an annual celebration of the achievements, contributions and history of African Americans and whereas the town of Breckenridge recognizes. The importance of honoring and acknowledging the significant impact. That African Americans have made on the cultural, social, political and economic makeup of our nation. And whereas Black History Month provides an opportunity. For all to reflect on the struggles and accomplishments of the African American community. Throughout history as well as to appreciate the ongoing efforts to promote. Equality, justice and inclusivity and whereas the town of Breckenridge is committed to fostering. An inclusive and diverse community that values and respects individuals. Of all backgrounds and recognizes that understanding and appreciating black history. Is crucial to building a more just and equitable society and. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Mayor Kelly Owens proudly declare the month of February twenty twenty-five as Black History Month. I ask the residents of Breckenridge to join me in recognizing and celebrating the great contributions made by black Americans to our town, state and nation. And encourage fostering greater understanding of the rich history and heritage that has shaped our diverse community. We're adopting this the eleventh day of February twenty twenty-five. Now moving into second reading of council bills, council bill number two, series twenty twenty-five. Big Sky Employee Housing Unit Development Agreement. Second reading, Ellie.
Good evening, mayor and council. Before you tonight is the second reading of the Big Sky Employee Unit Development Agreement, which is between the town and Jennifer Wright. To convert the Big Sky condo unit two located at one sixty East Adams from commercial use to employee housing. There have been no changes since first reading and staff recommends approval.
Thank you, Ellie. Any questions for Ellie? Any comments from the public on Big Sky Unit Two Development Agreement?
Jenny Wright, forty-two Midnight Sun Road. I'm not really wanting to speak, but my daughter wants me to. I really believe this unit will be called the crown jewel of the workforce housing inventory. I think it's going to be that special. And I really plan to share this space in historic downtown Breckenridge with as many people as possible. And although I won't be able to bring in everyone in our community, I do have access to some seriously important investors. My daughter Joey Wright is at kindergarten at Breckenridge Elementary School. And I can just imagine her friends walking the two blocks from school to play Nintendo, walking next door to grab candy and frozen pizzas. And how those, you know, memories might shape the future leaders of our community to make, you know, policy and plans to, you know. Continue to make this place special. Thank you.
Thanks, Jenny. Joey, we are very glad that you joined us here tonight, so thank you for coming. All right, public comment is closed. Can I have a motion?
I move that we pass council bill number two, series twenty twenty-five, title of which has been read into the record.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please, Helen.
Councilmember Sade.
Yes.
Councilmember Rankin.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Carlton.
Yes.
Councilmember Gerard.
Yes.
Councilmember Beckerman.
Yeah.
Mayor Owens.
Yes.
All right. Moving on to council bill number three, lighting code modifications. Again, Ellie.
Before you tonight is some modifications to the lighting code that are primarily focused on. Adjusting the enforcement and penalties section, removing some reference to lighting in the Ridge Lane and Hillside Development Policy and the addition of an exemption for. Building code required emergency lighting. There's been one change since first reading with a minor wording change to the retrofit definition and staff recommends.
Thanks, Ellie. Any questions? Any comments from the public on council bill number three, lighting code modifications? Seeing none, public comment is closed. Can I have a motion?
I move that we pass council bill number three, series twenty twenty-five, a bill for an ordinance amending the town of Breckenridge town code. Pertaining to development, exterior lighting and signs on private property.
Second.
Any further discussion?
For those who may have missed the work session, I'd like to compliment the planning department on. Its efforts in locating retrofit solutions that will not require people to really replace their. Non-compliant light fixtures, one of the biggest complaints we've had about this ordinance, so. Ellie didn't bring with her the, the exact examples, but they were shown this afternoon and it's a great idea and very inexpensive.
Thanks, Steve. Roll call, please, Helen.
Councilmember Beckerman.
Yes.
Councilmember Sade.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Gerard.
Yes.
Councilmember Rankin.
Yes.
Councilmember Carlton.
Yeah.
Mayor Owens.
All right, we have no first readings or resolutions, so we can move right into planning commission decisions. Anything to comment on? All right, we. Don't scare me. All right, we are moving on to, I don't have. Sorry, my. I thought I had my agenda all figured out this time, but still in the works. We did the report of the town manager and staff. Do you have anything to add? All right, report of the mayor and council members. Peyton asked me to reach out and remind you guys that if you want to go to the March cast meeting, that you need to let her know because she needs RSVP. It's March sixth. And it's in Denver. Mayors and managers. I have notes somewhere. Do you, can you remind me what we talked about?
I think we talked a lot about. Kind of the community, our immigrant community and impacts of, you know, just how things are right now and. So we didn't come to any conclusions or make any decisions on any paths forward, but we talked a lot about how we can better support our community.
Right.
And then we talked about the PUC.
Yeah, and a lot about grant funding and just. I mean, I know we talked about this last time, I believe, is just the uncertainty at grant funding right now. And so Aubrey's got her work cut out for her. I don't think there's anything else besides that. Okay. Open space?
Meeting Monday.
Tourism office?
Didn't have a meeting.
Rec history?
We meet in March.
Rec creative arts?
We did not have a meeting, but I would like to report that the Riverwalk Center will be animated every weekend this month. The Lyle Lovett concert is sold out. And the BCA board has a new president working through the system and the new master plan process.
Great, thank you. CML?
Next meeting is until the end of the month.
Social equity?
Meeting next Wednesday.
Arts and cultural master plan committee?
We have issued a couple of RFPs for the survey, the community outreach. So we got one of those RFPs back, two more out, supposed to get those back by end of week or early next week. And looking to move on it, quick to create as much daylight between this survey. And the resident sentiment survey that's going to go out in October, so. Looking forward to getting those out to everyone. And we'll make sure that the two surveys have a very different feel so that no one thinks that they've already received one.
Yeah.
And so with the help of steering committee and, and Julia's been amazing, Tamara and Lucy and everyone, it's been a really great effort, so. Looking forward.
Great.
To the results.
All right, other matters?
I have two. My first one is we, I had gotten a lot of requests about trying to move the high school graduation parade back to Thursday from Wednesday. This year and we were able to do that and community members are pretty happy about, about that and it was a. A, a nice approval from Public Works. They helped a lot, specifically, specifically Scott J. My second one is I cannot purport to understand exactly how Ski Magazine comes up with their rankings of ski resorts. But I wanted to bring up that a lot of our positive points came from. Nightlife. Operate and lodging, so like a lot of community input gave us the positive points that contributed to our ranking, so I just wanted to. To mention that to local, for local businesses.
Yeah, it's great. They're doing a good job. For bringing that up. Any other matters?
Visited the Carriage House Board of Directors meeting this month. Kind of consistent with our tours of the various childcare providers and preschools. They are very open and interested in further collabora- further collaboration between the centers to get accurate numbers of the number of children in need of the various services that can be provided, and hopeful of getting more accurate headcounts of what's necessary.
That's great. That would be really helpful. Okay. Anything else? Anything? Are you going to get to hockey on time? Meeting adjourned.